The zoning board of adjustment of the township of Bloomfield is now in session for the regular meeting of Thursday, August 19, 2021. Notice of the time, date, location, and agenda of this meeting, to the extent then known, will provide at least 48 hours prior to the commencement of this meeting in the following manner pursuant to provisions of Chapter 271 of the Law of 1975, which draws the open public meetings Act I, by posting such notice on the Balkan Board Missile Building in two, by mailing such notices to the office of the independent president of Bloomfield, like and under Star Ledger. Due to the ongoing pandemic and an effort to prevent further spread COVID-19, this meeting is being held remotely. Public is invited to attend by accessing the meeting via telephone or video link. Meeting is also available for viewing on the township's Channel 35 Comcast Channel 34 Verizon, or by streaming live on Facebook via the township's website. Public is invited to participate via Zoom by accessing the website link or calling the telephone number listed on the agenda, meeting ID 86952663650, casco 950524. Anyone who would like to review the application material you require to after meeting, if you have any questions, please contact the board secretary, Nicole Cosenza, and cosenza@bloomfieldtown.com, or 973-680-4012. And with that, Ms. Cosenza, please call the board.
Okay. Can you make sure I'm on muted? Ms. Brown? President? Mr. Johnson?
President.
Mr. Prince?
President.
Mr. Balnicki?
Dinner.
Mr. Wagner?
President.
Mr. Stivers?
President.
Ms. Hilaire?
President.
Chairman Machowski?
Here.
As of right now, I still don't see Ms. Tolliver, although she might come in. She did say she was coming, so.
All right, thank you.
Sure.
Brings us to item two. Communications, Resolutions, and Nets. As far as communications, we have a letter from Mr. Mariensky, his counsel for the application at 75 East Elmira Street, also 21 Block 542. He's requesting an adjournment because they're at the bottom of the agenda and unlikely to be heard. Requesting adjournment for the next regular meeting, that would be September 9th, and they waive any time constraints. Any discussion, board?
That would be October 9th, you mean?
Is it October? September 9th.
Oh, September 9th. Oh, okay. You're correct, I'm sorry. September 9th?
Any discussion, board? May I have a motion to adjourn 75 East Elmira Street to the regular meeting of September 9th at 7:00 p.m. with no further notice being required?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Prince moves. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Balnicki?
Yes, I believe so.
All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? There are no one opposed. 75 East Elmira Street is adjourned from September 9th to 7:00 p.m. No further notice is required. All right, moving along. We have minutes. These minutes have been distributed to the board in advance for review.
Mr. Chairman, Michael Rubin, just for a second. I saw this, they made an email with a problem of notice respect to 400 Hoover, which is on the agenda. If there's anybody here on that or whatever.
I mean, I heard it said.
Mr. Stivers, you gotta turn off your mic, thanks. If for any reason someone's here on that, perhaps we should announce now that that note will not be heard.
Wait a minute, 400 Hoover or 336-344 Hoover?
I don't know, whichever one, 336?
Yes.
Okay. 336-344 is my case, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Rubin. And we are not, there is not adequate notice on that, I don't think the notice has gotten out because there was a change that had to be made, so.
I understand that, but it was originally on the agenda, and just in case someone saw it posted online and was here for it, I just want to announce that it won't be heard. That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And while we're on my case, Mr. Chairman, if I can ask for one further adjournment. On the Lee case, I have a problem in that my planner is unavailable, and I gather there will be some changes made with regard to scheduling. I'd like to be scheduled whenever convenient, obviously as soon as could be done with regard to that case. If it's the next regularly scheduled meeting in the board, that's fine too.
Which one is that again, Mr. Cassino?
Lee, I don't have the file with me, but I believe it's brought in there.
Hold on one second.
Is Charles Housing, H. 383-387, Broughton Avenue?
Thank you, Mr. Rubin. The general's name is Mr. Lee.
It's now G. on the agenda.
Yeah, because Hoover Avenue had to be removed, 336.
We're going to try to establish a special meeting for the 22nd of September, and the next meeting is actually September 9th, the special meeting hopefully will be September 22nd.
And of course, I'd ask for the September 9th meeting if that's okay, Mr. Chairman, but if you hold me for the September 22 meeting, that's not a problem either.
We'll put you for the 9th. Any discussion, board? And no further notice is required, of course, Mr. Cassino?
Thank you.
And you waive time constraints.
I do.
Any discussion, board? May I have a motion to adjourn 383-387, Broughton Avenue to the regular meeting of September 9th at 7:00 p.m. with no further notice?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make that motion.
All right, Mr. Johnson moves. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Wagner? Mr. Wagner?
All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? I hear no one opposed. Charles Housing LLC, 383-387, Broughton Avenue is adjourned to September 9th at 7:00 p.m. No further notice is required.
Excuse me, if someone is here asking, will we just rejoin on that day at that time?
Yes. Are you here for that matter?
Yes, I am.
All right, so no further notice is required because legally, this is the announcement at a public meeting that we're adjourned, so you see no further mailings or you won't see it published, but it'll come up again on September 9th, and it'll either be heard or there's always the possibility it'll be adjourned again for some reason, I don't know right now.
Thank you, and is the Zoom contact information the same for that September 9th at 7:00 p.m. meeting?
You can contact me and I'll make sure I send you out an invite, so you have it directly, Ms. Harris.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Ms. Harris, and Beth, Beth and I are looking at that today.
Yeah.
The log information is the same for every, at least the last few meetings has been the same.
Mm-hmm.
And just verify that on the website as well, but for the last few meetings, it's been the same.
Yeah.
You're welcome.
You're welcome.
Good night. We're on minutes. Board, you've received three sets of minutes in advance in draft form for review. We'll take the regular, I guess it's what the regular meeting, or special, 6/321, June 3, 2021. Does anyone have any comments?
Mr. Chairman, I can barely hear you. I apologize.
Any comments regarding those minutes? No one? May I have a motion to approve the minutes of June 3, please?
So moved.
Mr. Balnicki?
Second. Mr. Balnicki moves. Is there a second?
Mr. Wagner?
Second. Mr. Wagner, second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? There are no one opposed. The minutes of June 3, 2021 are approved. That brings us to the minutes of June 17, 2021. Again, distributed in advance for the review board. Are there any comments, corrections, additions? Hearing no one? May I have a motion to approve the minutes of June 17?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Johnson moves. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Balnicki, second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Is anyone opposed? I hear no one opposed. The minutes of June 17, 2021 are approved. That brings us to July 8, 2021. Again, board, any discussion or comments regarding the minutes of July 8, 2021? I hear no one. May I have a motion to approve those minutes?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Prince moves. Is there a second?
I'll second. This is Barbara.
Ms. Brown, second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? I hear no one opposed. The minutes of July 8, 2021 are approved as submitted. That takes care of minutes. Let's move on to resolutions. We have three memorializing resolutions before us this evening, board. These minutes are distributed in advance to the board for review and comment. The first set of minutes, resolution in the matter of the application of progressive real estate of New Jersey for amended final site plan approval of variance pursuant to NJSA 40,55 D-70D1, variance is pursuant to NJSA 40,44 D-70C for a lot coverage driveway width, lack of garage parking and signage deviation, and design waiver to a parking layout amid the expansion of the parking lot servicing a new medical practice seeking to benefit from the prior use variance permitting an office use in the R1A single-family resident of District of Property located at 320 Elvin Avenue, Block.
You froze.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, you froze.
I just need to see the evidence.
You're still frozen. There you are. All right, so.
These are the people who can vote on this resolution. Vice Chairman Balnicki, Ms. Brown, Ms. Hilaire, Mr. Johnson, Mr. Prince, Mr. Stivers, and Mr. Wagner.
Right.
May I?
We need a motion.
Chairman Machowski's back, I can hear him now.
May I have a motion to approve this resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Balnicki moves. Is there a second? Mr. Wagner, second. Hold on here.
Okay, hold on one second. All right, so, Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Hilaire?
Present.
We're voting on the resolution, Ms. Hilaire.
I'm sorry. Yes.
Okay. Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Prince?
Yes.
Mr. Stivers?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Balnicki?
Yes. And Nicole, I think on that one, I have to come and sign that one.
Correct.
All right.
Okay, that resolution is approved. That brings us to the next resolution in the matter of the application of Jose Perez and Michael Meyer for a side, except that variance pursuant to NJSA 40,55 D-70C. It runs into permit the destruction of a second story addition to a single-family dwelling at the property located at 5 Leo Terrace Blocks 1261 Lot 22. Board, any discussion regarding this resolution? Hearing no one, may I have a motion to approve this resolution?
This one can be Mr. Balnicki, Ms. Brown, Mr. Johnson, Mr. Prince, Mr. Stivers, Mr. Wagner, or Chairman Machowski?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Mr. Wagner?
And moves. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Johnson, seconds. Please hold on.
Okay, hold on one second. Okay, Mr. Balnicki?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Prince?
Yes.
Mr. Stivers?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Chairman Machowski?
Yes. Resolution is approved. And that brings us to the last resolution on the seat, which is also distributed in advance to the review board, the resolution in the matter of the application of Hanwall and Varma, Hanwall, Varma, and Amrita Singh, Varma, for amended final site plan approval, a conditional use variance pursuant to NJSA 40,55 D-70D3, a design waiver, and a de minimis exception from the residential site improvement standards to driveway width due to conversion of a mixed commercial and residential building into a three-family dwelling at the property located 40 Frankl Street, Block 271, Lot 7. Any discussion regarding this resolution, please? Hearing no one, may I have a motion to approve this?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Prince moves. Is there a second?
Okay.
Second.
Mr. Wagner, seconds. Please hold on.
Okay. Mr. Balnicki?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Prince?
Yes.
Mr. Stivers?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Chairman Machowski?
Yes. Resolution is approved. All right. The other topic that I'd like to bring up?
Chairman, can I, I'm sorry to interrupt. Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'm sorry. I might have missed it, there was a resolution for Dr. Ibrahim 320 Belville Ave. I thought that was going to be on the agenda.
It was, it was the first one.
I'm sorry, my apologies.
You got it.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman.
That's all right.
Mr. Chairman, before you say anything, I just realized the discussion on in-person meetings should read October, not September, so I apologize for that error.
That's all right. Yes, 320 Belville Ave was the first resolution.
Thank you, I'm sorry, somehow I missed it, my apologies.
That's okay.
Board, we need to have special meeting, there are many applications that we have done, and Ms. Cosenza has surveyed all the members, and it's determined that the best date to gather the most members and to get the S will begin to September 22nd. I believe that's Wednesday?
Let's see, one second. That's correct.
And how many members do we expect on that date?
We have five. Ms. Hilaire, will you be available on September 22nd for a special meeting?
I think at nighttime, hold on, I think I have a wedding on my day.
Okay. We still have the 22nd.
Yeah, I have a wedding today, I can't do that thing.
Okay, no problem. So without Ms. Hilaire, we have five members, so we can at least do, cover some bulk variances on that meeting, and we have all four of our consultants, but we wouldn't need Nishuane or Brightview.
All right. Any discussion, board, regarding a special meeting on September 22nd to handle C variances?
Can I just ask?
May I have a motion to establish a special meeting on?
Can I just ask two members? I originally had Mr. Stivers as a maybe and Mr. Wagner as a maybe. I'm not sure if.
I can make it.
Mr. Wagner can be there as well? And Mr. Stivers, I'm not sure about you.
What's the date?
It's a Wednesday, September 22nd. I know Wednesdays are tough for you, but you tell me.
Yeah, I just can't.
If you can't, you can't. I totally understand. It is what it is.
Yeah, it kind of has to be a Monday or Friday.
Okay. All right, so we have six for that night.
All right, good man. A motion to establish a special meeting on September 22nd, 7:00 p.m.
So moved.
Mr. Balnicki moves this.
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. 10 seconds, hold the word, please.
Okay, hold on one second. Mr. Balnicki. Mr. Prince. All right. Ms. Brown? Ms. Brown? Okay. Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Prince?
Yes.
Mr. Balnicki?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Stivers?
Yes.
Ms. Hilaire?
Yes.
Chairman Machowski?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Yes, too.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Brown.
Yeah, technology, sorry.
Board, we have a special meeting on September 22nd at 7:00 p.m. Thank you. All right, moving right along. Item 3 is discussion regarding resuming in-person meetings. I think Cosenza pointed out, I think it's to say October. Board, my recommendation for your consideration is that we continue, we can look at the rest of the year, the view of the increase of COVID-19 and the D variances, increased transmissibility. I think for everyone's safety and for the public's safety, we should continue to mute harshly for at least the remainder of the calendar year. Any other thoughts on this matter, board?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I agree with you. I will say that my office is not going back in person until after January 31st of 2022 because of Delta, so I think that's a good indicator of what other organizations are recommending is safe for the public. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Anyone else?
I agree.
Thank you, Ms. Hilaire. Anyone? Who was that? Mr. Wagner?
Yes, I also agree, unfortunately.
All right. Sounds to me like essentially, we have a few things that the board will continue to mute harshly through the remainder of the calendar year. A person meeting can be considered at the end of this year in preparation for January 31. Requested. Relocation. Thank you. All right. That brings us to the next item, which is item 4. This is upcoming applications to consider for review by the board professional planner awards professional traffic engineer. The first one, the consider board is 383-387, Broughton Avenue, and this is a single, two family conversion proposed in R1A, consistent single-family, they wanted to make it a two-family, but they were all one-up. Do we need the planner or traffic expert? Board, any questions, please?
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Board members and, Mr. Chairman, I looked it over myself, and there was a little bit of uncertainty, I think, on my part on exactly what's going on, so I would suggest that we do employ the, our planner.
All right. Any other discussion, board?
Mr. Balnicki, here, I agree with Mr. Prince.
All right, thank you, Mr. Balnicki. Anyone else?
Is that just the planner or traffic as well?
Just the planner so far.
Okay.
Anyone else? Entertain the motion then to engage the planner for 383-387, Broughton Avenue.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Prince moves. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Balnicki, second. Hold the word, please.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Prince?
Yes.
Mr. Balnicki?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Stivers?
Yes.
Ms. Hilaire?
Yes.
Chairman Machowski?
Yes. Motion carries. The board is resolved to engage the planner. Please let Mr. Williams go.
He's on.
All right, that brings us, board, to 10 Elvin Terrace. This is an R1A zone proposing an expansion of existing home, and that involves a, implicates a floor area ratio variance, which is a D variance, but also some other bulk variance.
Mr. Chairman, on this Elvin Terrace, it's proposing the second floor addition renovation and no garage, okay? On this, so I think with this, I think, I think having our planner on this would be a wise decision.
All right. Other than discussion, board? Anyone else?
I'd also agree, because it's, you know, especially with the D variance, I would like to have Mr. Williams' advice on that.
Mr. Chairman, this is Brown. I absolutely would like to see a planner's advice on this one, no traffic though.
Okay. Anyone else? Hearing no one else, I'll entertain the motion to engage the planner.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Balnicki moves. Is there a second?
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Prince, second. Please hold the word.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Prince?
Yes.
Mr. Balnicki?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Stivers?
Yes.
Ms. Hilaire?
Yes.
Chairman Machowski?
Yes. Move, carries. Board, we've all convinced the planner to tend Elvin Terrace. It is that Mr. Williams of Nishuane who would now really need his assistance.
Got it.
He's dropped out of the town site.
No, he's there. Hi, Sam.
Very good. It takes care of all the administrative matters. Before I move on with the first application under Old Business, we have adjourned Elmira Street.
Yes.
And that was to September 9th, if I remember correctly? For the applicant's information, we have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8 applications on for this evening. It's unlikely we'll get the all of them, so if anyone wishes to have an early evening and request an adjournment, we'd be more than happy to adjourn anyone who wants to adjourn. Otherwise, you're welcome to stay till the end. We have 11 o'clock, 11:00 in curfew, and if we haven't been able to get to a particular application by time, it will be adjourned. Does anyone wish to be adjourned? I hear and see no one. So we move on to 5A under Old Business, the application of Steven Alexander as applicant known as for use variance, bulk variances, and any such other relief that may be required from the zoning board. Township of Bloomfield, keep them ready, install, and store on their, in a general industrial M1 zone on premises known as Mat 13, Block 313, Lot 48, better known as 258 Montgomery Street. Is their counsel for the applicant here this evening?
So?
Is the applicant here this evening?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander, is that you?
Yes, how you guys doing?
Good, how are you?
All right.
Are you representing, are you representing yourself this evening, sir?
Excuse me, boss, you have a test. Yes, sir.
All right?
Yes, sir.
You can proceed to tell us what you have done or wish to do, what variances are required, and the land use justification for those variances.
Okay, so it's a bulk variance? Okay, so it's, uh, a bulk variance needing to.
We're gonna swear in first, hold on, swear in, please, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Alexander, do you swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, ma'am.
Just state your name for the record.
Steve Alexander.
Okay, you can, go ahead.
Mr. Alexander, please proceed.
Okay, um, uh, well, sorry if I am not doing this correctly, it's like my first time doing this. But, um, yeah, so I, uh, pretty much I'm seeking a bulk variance for, uh, installing a dormer right above a stairwell. Um, and, uh, I was told that I needed to go through the process of like, you know, the bulk variance and permits and everything. Um, so that's what I'm looking to just get approved. It's right over a staircase, it's not extending any bedrooms or anything like that. It's, uh, a dormer, literally right over a staircase.
So what particular variance do you want?
Um, I, it's, uh, variance for Nicole, it was, uh, for
I'm sure, I'm sure our engineer can speak better to that.
It, it's up to Mr. Chairman if he, he wants me to, uh, speak.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, would you like me to respond, or?
Yeah, let's, let's swear in, Mr. Uh.
Okay, raise your right hand, Anthony. Do you swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
How you doing?
Just state your name for the record.
Anthony Marucci.
Go ahead, Anthony.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I wrote a resolution, I mean, I'm sorry, I wrote a report on this application dated April second, two thousand twenty-one. And, uh, it's, it's a very short report because this is much more than, than just a bulk, uh, variance. The subject property is in the, uh, M one, uh, general industrial zone where residential use is not permitted. And this dormer is an expansion of that non-conforming use to, to use the third floor of, of this, uh, of this property. And in my report, I attached a copy of the resolution that was approved by the board just a few years ago under a different owner, where the owner had, had, uh, submitted an application before the board to convert the front, the storefront on the first floor that was a restaurant years ago into a medical office and also had site plan approval to improve the access to the, the, uh, first floor and also for parking. And, uh, that was never accomplished. The owner sold it to Mr. Alexander. Mr. Alexander built the dormer already, this was a violation, he received a violation on it. And, uh, I, I, this is more than, than, than just a dormer. It, I, I, in my opinion, he's, he should be, there is no restaurant use here. He, he puts in his application, there's a restaurant, there is no restaurant use here. Restaurant use is not even, wait a minute, wait a minute.
I purchased, I purchased the building.
Hold on, hold on.
Oh, okay.
The restaurant use is not permitted. It's an industrial zone.
Okay, so when I purchased the, the property, I purchased the property as, uh, um, mixed-use property. I wasn't told that I couldn't use the property for what I purchased it for and as I purchased it for by anybody, by the, by no one, so.
They're not forced to, they're not forced to, you did not do your due diligence.
Whatever the, the previous owner, um, was trying to do, he didn't inform me of anything.
Sir, you did not do your due diligence, you do not have a mixed-use property, you're in the industrial zone. As a matter of fact, I have to tell the board you had another violation there where you were parking unregistered vehicles on the property and you received a violation for that also. And, uh, again, you, you can't just come in and do what you want to do. You have to tell the board exactly what you want to do and they will make the decision. But you don't have a mixed use there, you don't have a restaurant use. That restaurant hasn't been there in years.
Okay.
And there's a resolution, and there's a resolution on file for what was approved there.
Okay, so the, the office that was supposed to be, you know, um, built there and installed there, whatever the case may be, was with the prior owner. Um, the parking situation, COVID, we were in the middle of COVID and I, and I had a couple of my vehicles there. Couldn't get any plates on it, so we were in the middle of the, the, the COVID situation and the violation for the dormer. So naturally, the inspector drives right past there to get to the office, so he saw the vehicle without plates. I can't do nothing about that, I can't force D M V to do anything, so I got violations because of that, so. The, the fact of the matter is, what we're dealing with right now is the fact that there was a dormer put on there. Uh, there was a leak in the, in the roof, whatever the situation was. So we were fixing the roof and just decided to just, you know, raise it and put a dormer there, whatever. And I'm obviously going through the channels to try to rectify the situation, but the fact, you know, that you're telling me that it's not a mixed use, I purchased it as mixed use, it went through whatever the channels that needed to go through in order for me to close on the building, the property as such.
Mr. Alexander, you did not purchase it as a mixed use. If you did not, if you did not do your due diligence, then, then that's not the town's problem. You don't have a use for the first floor front of that building. The restaurant use has not been there in years and it's not a permitted use and it's not grandfathered. You need to come to the board.
Can I just, can I just please, we don't, we don't want you to argue, let me just, let me just stop everybody here. We are here for a D two variance for expansion of a non-performing use. This is a mixed-use building. They put a dormer over a stairwell on the third floor, which is a component of the residential use, which is not permitted. We are here in a D two variance. Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Whatever you want to put in the potential component of that, you want to file a zoning permit application for.
Okay.
And it will be handled accordingly. I, I am not the zoning officer, I do not make those decisions. Mr. Marucci is, I think you have a pretty good idea of what he's telling you to. If you, the, the prior resolution is attached to his, um, report on your application, you have it. Mr. Alexander?
Right, I'm checking, I'm checking right now.
Okay.
And this was regarding the old owner, correct?
Yes, but you should know that any decision of the board runs with the land. It's not unique to the owner who applies for it, it runs with the land both positively and negatively. So you, if you want to seek legal advice under such prerogatives, but you will need to file, you will need to file a zoning permit application for the ground floor use and will go through regular channels and reviewed in accordance with standard procedures. Let's just deal with the issue before us tonight.
Okay.
Okay?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Marucci, you okay with that?
I have one question. The third floor, is it being used for residential purposes today?
It's, it's not being used, it's part of the second floor.
But it's not part of the second floor, it's an expansion.
Anthony, let him testify about what he's doing, okay?
I just want to make, I just want to make it clear, Mr. Rubin, I just want to make it clear, these were violations and it's a D two variance, it's not a bulk variance.
I agree, it's a D two variance. Let him explain what the building, what the, what, how the property was used before he began the renovations, how he intends to use it after the renovations, and then we can deal with whatever issues arise from the facts. But let's hear the facts first.
And I appreciate, I appreciate you for that because at the end of the day, I've, I've felt since I've purchased this property, it's been like a personal vendetta against me and I don't know, uh, I don't know, uh, Mr., um, Anthony, I don't know anybody. I'm just, my first time in the, in, in Bloomfield. So ever since I came in, it's been an issue. So at the end of the day, he's making, the way he's speaking to me is like, if it's personal, I don't know him at all.
Sir, I don't know, that's not personal.
I don't know, it sounds personal, because I don't know, I don't know, I don't know what the old owner, you know, was trying to do. All I know is that he put a building up for sale, they told me what it was all for, they had it listed as mixed use, and I purchased it as such, period.
Sir, if you read the resolution, you will see that, um, it permitted an office use, a medical office on the ground floor and residential, uh, that is a mixed use.
Exactly, that's exactly how I purchased it and, and I went to the building market.
So, 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 Mr. Alexander, Mr. Alexander, Mr. Alexander, please, don't interrupt me.
Yes, sorry.
So what I'm telling you is, read the resolution, if you want to have your attorney read the resolution, advise him what he thinks it says, file a zoning permit application for the ground floor use, and let's talk about the second, third floor because that's what's before the board right now.
Okay.
Okay?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, the floor is yours, please, tell us what was there and what you're doing and why.
So what was there, everything that was there is, was existently there when I purchased the place except for the dormer. That was it, everything that was in that place was exactly the way it was. All we did was paint, new doors, kitchen cabinets, the basics, just so we could get it rented out and get tenants in there. Other than that, we didn't add an extra floor, we didn't do anything.
Was the second floor apartment, a two-floor apartment?
Yes, it was, it was, there was a second floor, there was a third floor, and then there was the, it was the first floor.
And the apartment, the apartment used both the second and third floor?
Was combined, yes, with the last tenants that were there.
And what's the purpose of this dormer?
The dormer was just a walkway, it's just a staircase going to the third sec, the, 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 the third floor portion of it. It was, it was tight, so, you know, like I said, um, we were redoing part of the roof anyway because of water damage, so we wound up changing some of the, the rafters that needed to be, uh, uh, removed because of the water damage. And I just told the guys, we were in the middle of COVID, everything was shut down, it needed to be done, so I was just like, you know what? Just, um, the, the contractor, I was like, just, um, add a net dormer, add a dormer right there so we can, you know, so we can pass things through there easily. Other than that, you would, you pretty much kind of hit your head on the thirds, on the, on the last step. That was the only purpose.
The, 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 the architectural plan suggests that the dormer area, uh, includes space above a closet. Um, is that closet, what is that closet used for, is that a bedroom closet, is that a storage closet?
It's just a little small closet, it, it would be used as a storage closet or a bedroom closet that's there, I have no clue.
What are the ceiling heights on?
That was there.
And what are the ceiling heights on the, on the various rooms on the attic plan?
Um, one of the ceilings is about, I would say, eight, because it goes to, it goes to a peak and the other one is about nine, probably eight and a half feet high.
So in one of the, of the attic plan, there says, uh, it says rafters, it shows parking, is that, is that where it's eight to nine feet down, right down the middle?
So when you walk, when you walk right up the steps, the, the ceiling's about, are about seven, seven in the center and then in the, the, the two spaces left and right, there's, the, you know, one goes with the rafters and then the other one is actually, uh, you know, um, about eight feet high. Because I can raise my hand and touch the ceiling.
So those two rooms on the attic floor are usable for bed, for bedroom use, because the ceilings are high enough, that's what you're saying?
Correct, yes.
And how many bedrooms are on the second floor?
On the second floor, there's three.
So this would be a five-bedroom apartment?
That's, that's what, I guess the way they had it before, yes.
Is there any bathroom on the third floor?
There is.
I, where is it on this plan, because it's not shown?
It's, it's, uh, towards, it's towards the window. It's towards the window next to the, the back side of the house, towards the left side of the house.
It's next to the back bedroom?
Correct.
Is, is this, is the building sprinkler?
Uh, no.
Is there only one means of ingress and egress to the third floor?
Uh, there's, there's, uh, no, there's only one.
Okay.
There's no fire escape.
All right, um. I, I don't have any other questions, I, I hope, at least I helped the board by creating some kind of a record. Or if, obviously, the board should follow up any questions they may have. But I apologize for intervening, I just thought it was the most expeditious way to move through this.
Um, Mr. Alexander, this is labeled as unit number two, where or why is unit number one?
Number one is on the, on the ground floor, I mean, on the, on the bottom floor, it's right behind, um, the store.
And that's residential also?
Correct.
Unit number one is the residence?
Yes.
And, uh, the work you did to have the dormer added, did you have a building permit for that?
At the time, no, because everything was shut down.
The town was not shut down.
Uh, you guys, I think you guys shut down for, I think it was like two weeks or three weeks?
No, everybody was still working, even if you couldn't come in the building.
Oh, okay.
Other questions, board?
Yeah, did, did you get a permit for the roof?
Uh, I wound up filing, um, the application and everything to get the zoning and everything, trying to get everything approved once everything unraveled, that I needed a permit to do the dormer.
When, when did you get the, when did you get the permits?
Um, I started filing for the permits right after, uh, I was, Mr. Beasley came and gave me the violations. I, I started working with him and Miss Nepal to try to get the permits and everything that was needed to.
Did it date on there, or a month, a year, or what?
Excuse me, I didn't hear.
Do we have a date or a month or a year on that, so you can get a timeframe of what's going on here?
One second.
Maybe you can, uh, give a little type of timeframe, so when you got your violation. Or someone's, you can look at the date on that.
There are violations attached to Mr. Marucci's report.
Where's that feedback coming from?
Okay. July, July of two thousand twenty. Let's see.
Where does that noise coming from?
You, you, Allen.
It's not him, because it did the same thing when it was on mic.
I'll tell you.
And now it stopped. Now it stopped.
Um, could you comment on, I'm looking at the, um, letter from the town, July sixth, two thousand twenty, Mr. Alexander, and it says that in the first paragraph, the dormer needed to be taken down and replaced, so there was no dormer. So there was a dormer there before, or there wasn't a dormer there before?
Yeah, so I didn't, I didn't understand exactly, um, uh, what the whole violation was for. So when I went through everything with the contractor and the building and Mr. Beasy, uh, he explained to me exactly what we were doing, what was being put, so there was no dormer before. It was, it was pretty much the roof, because there's a dormer on the other side. So there's, the, the place up there had, on the top of the roof has two dormers, so pretty much, you know, um, when I spoke, they clarified everything for me with the contractor and everything, so we actually had to change that, there was no dormer.
Has there been any, uh, other work done inside the unit on the second floor or the, uh, third floor?
No, just, just basic, you know, regular stuff that doesn't need any permit for, like floors and painting. I didn't even do the bathroom, the bathroom is still old, the original bathroom that the old owner had there.
That's not shown on the plan here or anything like that, so. Thank you.
No problem.
Questions, board?
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Go ahead, Mr. Chairman.
Um, Mr. Alexander, um, when you said that, uh, uh, before you built a dormer, that it was tight, what do you mean by tight?
So the, the, the head clearance for anybody taller than like six feet, once you get to the top step, you know, I, um, I guess the, the previous owner must have been tall or whatever, he realized that and he wound up shaving one of the. he wound up shaving one of the dorm, uh, one of the, the rafters. So you wouldn't hit your head. So that's why it just came to my mind, while we're doing the roof over, just, you know, change those rafters. So the top step, the top step, you would hit your head if you're like six, six-one, six-two.
And how far into the, uh, space up there, uh, will six feet, um, before you have six feet clearance? How many feet?
One, two, three, four, five. It was like the fifth, the fifth or sixth step, and then it turns left, and then there's three more steps. So right when you got to the, the fifth step, which was a platform, and then it turns left to go up three more steps. So once you got to the top of the fifth step is when that turn where you hit your head if you were too tall.
Okay, and from that point, how many feet would it be from that point where you would have at least six feet clearance?
It would literally be about four, I would say four to five feet.
And how many feet from there to the other end where you would have no clearance?
Three. So you have clearance, you would have clearance all the way till you get to the top step, and then there was that one raptor.
Correct, so that's not what it wasn't. What I'm asking you about is when you are at the top of the raptor, you have made the six-foot clearance, and you walk forward, how many feet from there to the next raptor before you have less than six feet clearance?
It's about five feet.
So we're looking at a space about five by, what's the next dimension? One is five by?
It was literally five. It was about, it was about, uh, probably a three, a three, a three by, a three by four, a three by three landing. Before everything started to clear because that's where the, the, the raptor went down to the peak of the building. So it was that bottom raptor that was the issue.
Right.
It wasn't the top because the top, like I said before, inside the main space, there's clearance. It was when you're walking down the steps, that bottom raptor, which is at the top of the fifth step or the sixth step.
So it is your testimony then that, that there was a residential, um, uh, or a, uh, a bedroom or a finished living space already built up there when you purchased the property?
Yes, there was already a finished space there.
Okay, and what is contained in that finished space?
Well, right now, nothing.
Well, if it's finished, what's in it?
What's in it is the two rooms in the bathroom.
Right.
But is there anything physically in there? No, there's nothing in there in the space. It's not being used right now because I, because of the, the, the dormer.
Okay, good enough. Uh, thank you, Mr. Alexander. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Prince. Other questions, board?
Chairman, I have a couple of questions.
Go ahead, Mr. Wyman.
Mr. Alexander, uh, I'm just looking at the plans here. It, it just concerns me that there might be some information missing, you know, along with the bathroom. Are there any on the second floor plan, are there no walls in that? In that air, in that space, or is that, is it only because that was?
In the second floor?
Yeah, the, the, the plans that we have before the board, I don't show any walls or any sort of structural elements in the second floor.
Yeah, because, uh, it wasn't, it wasn't, the, it wasn't requested. So it wasn't, the, the, the issue was the dormer. So when I got, when I contacted architect and we spoke to, you know, the building department, everything that we were applying for needed the architect to put in, to his architectural plan, which was the top floor.
Got it. Okay, um, now what I'm looking at is the back, there's a, on the second floor, there looks like there's a bit of a jog out from the perimeter of the house. Is, is this, is this stairwell the only stairwell in where, the stairwell for the dormer, is that the only stairwell for this, this property? Or is there another stairwell in the house?
That, that, so that, that is the, the second stairwell to the second floor apartment. And, and access to the first floor apartment. So that's pretty much the, the exit to the back of the house, which would be the egress.
Okay, and that doesn't go up to the third floor? It doesn't go all the way up? No. Okay. Uh, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Alexander.
No problem.
Other questions, board?
Mr. Chairman, is, is Mr. Marucci going to provide additional testimony? Is that the intent?
That's the intent.
Okay, alright, thank. I, I'll wait for his testimony then. Because it, it sounds like all that's, all that we're considering now is the dormer, which is really just headspace for the landing to the third floor. Is it, is that correct, Mr. Alexander? I'm going to unmute, Mr. Alexander.
Sorry.
So, so, so the dormer, which is what's being considered at least right now?
Yes, yes, the dormer is what's being considered right now.
That's just for the, for the landing to the third floor, right?
Yes, that, that's all it is, sir. You know, honestly, like, like, you know, now, from the beginning of this whole Zoom meeting, now I have other things that I'm going to, you know, have to look into or, or rectify, which was, like I said, it wasn't what's in my attention. But right now, right now, the meat, the reason for this whole purpose was for the dormer.
Okay. Alright, I don't have any question, further questions at this time. I'll, I'll wait for, uh, Mr. Marucci's testimony.
So, Mr. Rubin, it appears, and I, I just want to reiterate this so there's, there's no confusion, uh, that we're looking at requests to end the non-conforming use. And the, the non-conforming use is essentially two apartments in the M1 zone. One apartment's on the first floor, the ground floor, and the second apartment is on the second and third floor. And the expansion of this non-conforming use with the residents in the M1 zone is limited in our consideration to the addition of a dormitory, a dormer, excuse me, that, uh, is being, or was installed for the purpose of, uh, creating adequate headroom to use the staircase in an efficient manner. And that's all, all is considered. And that the, uh, commercial use that, that could possibly exist in the front of a building on the ground floor that was approved for a doctor's office is, is in no way under consideration by this board this evening. And that would be the subject of a, of a zoning permit application to the zoning official if the owner decided to use that space for any purpose. Do I have it right?
I think so, yes.
Alright. Thank you. Mr. Alexander, do you have anything else to, to add to this discussion?
Um, no, no, um, I appreciate what you guys found and I just got, uh, I just have a couple of things that I guess I gotta go and speak to Mr. Beasy and Mr. Nicole about.
Alright, thank you. We'll hear from, uh, Mr. Marucci. Mr. Marucci, you're under oath. Could you, uh, give us the benefit of your, um, report and any other information you can add?
Mr. Chairman, first of all, I was not getting personal with the applicant. I, sorry, I got a little bit excited, but um, this was all done with violations, as I said before. Um, I have a que, I have a question for Mr. Alexander. Did you do any electrical work on the property?
Any electrical work was done? No.
Did you bring a new electric service in?
Oh, yeah, that was, there was permits called for that.
You brought a new electric service in?
Yeah, that was, that was permit called for that.
Mr. Chairman, if you look at the front page of the architectural plans, on the photograph at the bottom where it says right side west, you can see the new, uh, meters. The electric service, the meters?
Yes.
There are at least four meters on, on, on the electric, outside electric panel with the, with the possibility of two more meters. I, I bring this to your attention because I'd like to know what the applicant's intentions are here because it looks like, uh, he's trying to make more units. I, I go back to twenty seventeen, Mr. Chairman, where the zoning board approved the office use on the first floor with the residential use. If the first, the, the first apartment was in the rear, and the second apartment was on the second floor. At that time, there was no residential use in that third floor. And my concern is, looking at that electric panel on the outside, it looks like there's a possibility of putting six meters over here. I understand right now that this is, in a sense, being bifurcated where the applicant only wants the, the, uh, dorm, but it, from what I remember, there was no use on that third floor at the time that, that the board approved the twenty seventeen application. This is up to Mr. Alexander. He's gonna have to come back for that first floor use. And there was a site plan approved with parking, and if this is gonna be a five-bedroom unit, you need parking, and right now that parking doesn't meet code in terms of paving, lighting, landscaping, et cetera. He knew this when he purchased the property, and if he didn't know it, then he did not do his due diligence. There's a resolution on file, and that's why I brought this to the board's attention. That's all I have to say.
So, Mr. Marucci and Mr. Rubin, I'll ask them both. Will the applicant need a zoning permit for the residential component of this building?
Yes, he does.
So he, he needs a zoning permit for the residential portion, and if he intends to utilize the commercial portion of the front, he would need a zoning permit for that as well. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Oh, Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, Mr. Prince.
This raises a question then. If there are permits and zoning issues involved in this property, does it, um, make sense for us to continue, uh, approving something that, based on it looks as if it's not? Um,
Right, you're, you're a higher enforcement entity.
No, we're not.
We're, 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 we are here with an application before us. There, there are no open violations. He has obtained permits to put the electrical service in. He has testified to. He testified to that the second floor was built out before he bought it. I agree with Mr. Marucci at the prior hearing. It was testified to that it was not built out. That should all be part of the inspection process. If we, I don't know where he was going with this. We are not here to enforce code. We are here to judge whether or not he's entitled to put this dormer on. And let's just focus on that issue, please.
Like I said, I, and I appreciate you saying that because I, I, listen, I cold heart, I cold-heartedly really feel since I've purchased this building, I don't know what it is. It feels like everything has continuously been personal, one thousand percent, period. I don't know anybody in Bloomfield. I haven't done anything to anybody, and it just sounds, it's like what was said before, that this is regarding a dormer. It has nothing to do.
Please, please stop using the word personal because it's not personal. You received violations. You were trying to sell.
Okay, and those violations, and those, but those violations were taken care of. I took care of those violations. Whenever the, the violations was brought to me, I took care of it.
Right now, you're still, right now, you're still in violation, unless, until the board approves.
By the time I purchased a vehicle, trying to get it registered to, through DMV during COVID, I just purchased another vehicle. It took me three months just to get the plates. So, and I couldn't leave it over there because you guys would've came by and slapped me with another violation because I didn't have plates. Every time there was a situation, I ran down to the, the building department and I spoke to somebody and I tried to rectify the situation. It's not like I just ignored everything.
So, Mr. Marucci's finished, his testimony. Um, is there any manner of the public who wishes to, uh, be sworn in and provide testimony?
I don't see anybody raising their hand for this one.
Alright, thank you. Mr. Alexander, you have the opportunity to summarize before the board makes a decision, if you wish to. Anything else to say?
So, so, listen, like I said, I, I, to the people who are in this Zoom meeting, who is actually thinking with a clear mind and has, has nothing personal against me or the property, like I said, whatever issues were with the property beforehand, I did not know of anything, anything. The, the, the transaction went down, uh, the transaction aspired so quick that we weren't able to go in, 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 and do anything. Like I said, this was, this was during COVID, this was during the beginning processes of COVID, and the, the transaction happened so quick. So, as far as me doing my due diligence and not doing my due diligence, like, I, 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 you know, I don't understand what it is that I may have done to, you know, Mr. Marucci or whatever the case may be to make it so personal, but like I said, I'm going through the channels and I have gone through the channels to try to make this property look the best that it could be in Bloomfield. That property wasn't taken care of, the, the, the person sold it to me, and he sold it to me in the conditions that it was in, and I cleaned up the property. I maintain the property. There's no, there's nothing that, that can be said other than the issue that we're dealing with, which is the dormer. Everything else, I'm going through the channels of trying to rectify. Did I have permits open? I had permits, you know, I, I, I got approved for the, you know, for the electrical service. It's like he's trying to find anything.
I mean, seriously?
Whatever needed to be done, I'm trying to do and make sure that property looks in the best condition that it could possibly be.
Alright. Thank you, Mr. Alexander. Thank you. Uh, time for public hearing is closed. More, more time for discussion has begun, and please remember, we're considering a very narrow question here. Uh, the question is the expansion of the residential component of this structure by adding a dormer. For the reason given that a decreased headroom is needed to make the staircase more functional. We are not considering the use in the commercial addendum to the building that's on the street side. And we're not considering the parking situation because that's not before us. And we're not considering the, the use itself of the residential portion because that's going to require a zoning permit application first before anyone can consider making that a living space strictly, variance, expansion of a non-conforming use, which is residents in an M1 industrial zone by virtue of adding a dormer. So would that discussion be a form?
Mr. Chairman, if, if I may, um, you know, with respect to the dormer itself, I mean, I feel like this is a dangerous alteration to the dwelling or to the structure. Um, you know, I, I personally don't have an issue with the dormer itself. It's, it literally provides nothing more than some additional head clearance room and some light as access to the third floor. Um, so in that regard, um, you know, the dormer is, is just a very minor alteration to this particular structure. Um, it sounds like we will probably see Mr. Alexander again at another zoning board meeting to consider the rest of the structure. But with respect to the dormer only, um, I have no issues.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Johnson. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
Um, I, uh, totally agree with Mr. Johnson on this, that we just focus in on the, um, uh, the dormer, okay, and that, uh, we will be, uh, hearing again about this. And, uh, just for the record, I do not believe that anything that has been done through the zone by the zoning officer or the zoning, uh, uh, inspectors. by the zoning officer or the zoning inspectors is personal. They're just doing their job. And I might add, they're doing their job very well.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Anyone else? Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, I also want to add that, you know, if we are voting on the dormer to approve or disapprove the dormer, that's, I want to make it clear, that's all I'm approving is just the dormer.
Yes, understood.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Here are no one else. I want to take a motion.
I'll make the motion to approve the dormer.
All right. Do you have your moves? Give it a second.
Mr. Chairman, I will second that.
All right, Mr. Johnson, second.
Okay. Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Prince?
No.
Mr. Balniki?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Stivers?
Yes.
Chairman Machowski?
Yes. Application's approved.
You have a Slack from work, boss lady.
I, seriously.
What was that?
I have no idea. Sorry. Back on you.
She's using application Slack. She's getting messages when she gets off. That brings us to Old Business 5D. The application of John and Eugene Dark as applicants and owners for use experience and such other relief that may be required from the zoning or attachment of Bloomfield to enclose a fortunate residential one-family R1B zone, and premises known as Map 29, Block 783, Lot 19, better known as 62 Mill Street.
Chairman, I just want to let you know that I believe Ms. Tolliver has signed on a little before eight o'clock.
Yes, do you?
Ms. Tolliver, you're here?
Yes, I am.
Okay, thank you.
Let the record show that Ms. Tolliver has joined the meeting. And is the applicant here?
Please proceed, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, Mr. Johnson, you're counsel for the applicant.
I am, sir.
Please proceed.
Mr. Chairman, members of your board, as you know, councilman Robert Cassioum. The firm is Cassioum, McMichael, 524 Union Avenue, in Belleville. I represent the applicants in this matter, Eugene and Joanna Dark, the owners of 62 Mill Street. The property is a two-family home located in an R1B single-family residential zone. The property in 62 Mill Street is therefore a legal, nonconforming two-family. My clients are seeking to make certain improvements, which will be briefly discussed by Mr. Dark and described in detail by the architect, Miracle Lewandowski. Because my client is seeking to expand that pre-existing nonconforming use, this is a D2 variance. The witnesses you'll hear from are Mr. Dark. And although normally I only have one applicant witness, I will also have a brief statement from Mrs. Dark because of the unique circumstances. The other witnesses will be Miracle Lewandowski, the architect, and Bill Stimmel, the engineer and planner.
Go ahead, Mr. Cassioum. Call your witness.
I'd like to call my first witness, Eugene Dark. Mr. Dark, you'll have to be sworn in.
Okay, Mr. Dark, can you raise your right hand?
Absolutely.
Do you swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Just state your name for the record.
Eugene Dark.
Thank you, Mr. Dark. Go ahead, Mr. Cassioum.
Dark, where are you currently residing?
Currently residing?
Yes, sir.
82 Concord Avenue, Bonnok, New Jersey.
And what is your business address?
My business address is right on 670 Broad Street, right next to Holstings, on a corner watch on after Barnesville.
And you own 62 Mill Street?
Uh, yes, we do.
And that's with your wife?
Yes, it is.
And for how long have you owned that property?
A few years, but extended her family for, I guess, 50 years since the sixties.
And would you briefly describe that two-family home, briefly?
Uh, it's, it's a two-family house that her father converted back in. It was a two-family house when they bought it. It was a two-family house initially. Her family bought it when her family purchased it.
Would you explain to the board what you're seeking approval to do and why?
Basically, make the roof pretty, the right way. There was a fire in the house years ago.
And are you also...
Yeah, we wanted basically, we make the roof higher than it looks slightly higher than it is. There was a fire in the house, goes ago, and her father received money from the insurance company, put a flat roof on the house. We want to put a pitch on the roof so it conforms to the houses that are next to it. And also, on the front of the house, we'd like to extend the porch on the front of the house and enclose the porch on the front of the house to make a bedroom bigger in the front for us to sleep in.
And you changed from your initial plan with regard to a front door?
Yeah, there was a front door. There'll be a front door. There was always a... Excuse me, I didn't hear you say something.
Did you change from your initial plan as to the front door? Will there be a front door?
Oh, yes, there will be. There will be a front door there.
Mr. Chairman, that's the only set of questions I have for Mr. Dark.
Board, any questions for Mr. Dark? Anyone, board?
Obviously, we'll get further description of what's being done from the architect.
Any member of the public have a question for Mr. Dark? Here we can see no one. Thank you, Mr. Dark.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, as I indicated, I usually only have one applicant. But in this situation, I'd like to have Joanna Dark testify, and I'll explain why. The Dark started this application without the benefit of counsel. And she wrote a letter directing it to the mayor, not understanding the process. And I think there's some comments in that letter that might be helpful to describe what the situation is and what they're seeking to do. Mrs. Dark, would you please just review the portions of that letter you directed to the mayor some time ago that you and I have discussed?
I believe I have to...
Raise your right hand and be sworn in, please.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
You gotta be sworn in. My apologies.
Ms. Dark, do you swear that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Just state your name for the record, please.
Joanna Dark.
Thank you, Ms. Dark.
Go ahead.
And, Mrs. Dark, would you go ahead and review those sections you and I talked about?
Yes. I have been a lifelong resident of Bloomfield. The house at 62 Mill Street has remained in the family since my parents purchased it in 1960. When my parents purchased 58 Mill Street, next door, my brother Tommy became owner of 62. Currently, the house is neglected and in disrepair. My brother had a mental crisis after my parents' deaths and did nothing to maintain the property. Eugene and I now own it and would like to make it our home to age in place. We are in our late 60s, and Eugene is coping with Parkinson's disease, which is progressing. He needs to have handicapped accessible space. Our aim is to rehab the home and move in as soon as possible. A fire in the late 1970s destroyed the roof. Because of finances, my father chose to lower the roof, which is how it is now. The roof is sagging and is structurally unsound. It has been repaired a number of times. It needs to be replaced. The design of the roof as it is now will continue to require repairs over time. We wanted to restore the roof to its original peak for a number of reasons. First, the original roof conformed with the neighborhood of both one- and two-family homes. Also, we want to eliminate the need for frequent repairs. Additionally, we need space to install an HVAC system. We have absolutely no intention to make it a living space. It only accessfully can be pulled downstairs to accommodate necessary maintenance.
Mr. Chairman, I have no other statement or questions of Mrs. Dark.
Board, any questions for Mr. Dark? No? Any member of the public? Here are no one. Thank you, Mrs. Dark.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to call my architect witness, Mir, Miracle Lewandowski. Mr. Lewandowski?
Yes. Good evening.
Hi, Mr. Lewandowski. Can you raise your right hand? Do you swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Just state your name for the record.
I'm Miroslaw Lewandowski, M-I-R-O-S-L-A-W-L-E-W-A-N-D-O-W-S-K-I.
Thank you.
Mr. Lewandowski, what is your occupation and where do you maintain your practice?
I'm an architect, and I practice in New Jersey, New York, and Pennsylvania.
And where is the location of your office?
Currently, in Sussex, New Jersey.
And from what school did you graduate? What degree did you obtain?
I graduated from School of Architecture in Poland, and I obtained master in architecture.
And are you licensed architect? You have your license in New Jersey. You already stated that. My apologies.
Correct, yes.
Have you testified previously before zoning boards and planning boards?
Yes, I did testify in front of 15 zoning boards, including this one.
Chairman, I submit that Mr. Lewandowski is qualified in the field of architecture to follow up with questions with regard to the structure.
Any discussion, board? If the board accepts Mr. Lewandowski as an expert in architecture, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Lewandowski, would you describe the site?
Yes, may I share my screen?
Certainly.
Yes, I'm gonna make sure you're on. It's okay, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, yeah, you can.
You're pre-invited.
Oh, I hit the wrong one.
If you can, please let me know if you see the screen.
Yes.
Make your shape, Mr. Lewandowski.
This is the sheet A1 that was submitted. And on this sheet, we see a side plan. This side is a rectangular lot 50 by 150. And on Mill Street, number 62. On this side, we have a two-story building located in the front portion of the lot and a one-story existing garage in the back.
And briefly describe the existing structure itself, the two-family home.
Yes, existing structure. We do have floor plans of existing floors above. So, existing first floor comprised, is one apartment comprised of kitchen and dining area with living room in front and middle section and two bedrooms in the back. So, it's a two-bedroom apartment. This first floor is connected to a basement right now. And basement is half-finished. I would say even two-thirds of the basement is finished, which is a recreation room, laundry, and full bathroom. The back portion of the basement is, remains unfinished. On the second floor, we have another apartment to which front staircase leads, coming into the front of the building. And this apartment is also a two-bedroom apartment with two bedrooms in the back, kitchen in the middle section of the building, and dining and living in the front section of the building.
Lewandowski, would you review the changes that are proposed, in particular with regard to, start with the first floor?
Yes, so on the right side of this sheet A1, we see here proposed first floor plan. What we're doing, basically switching and trying to put a bedroom area from the building and the living area with living room, kitchen, and dining in the rear section of the building. We also do propose a new deck that will be accessible from the living room. So, this also remains, actually, one-bedroom apartment right now. But we did switch the entry to the second-floor apartment from moving from the front corner of the building to the side of the building here. There's a litifor here, actually to both apartments. The main entry to the first-floor apartment to this litifor, and then going to the left, going up the stair, entry to the second-floor apartment. So, this apartment on the first floor has a connection, as we can see here, a staircase leading down to the basement. And we can see the basement plan on sheet A2 that was submitted. So, as we come down from the staircase to the basement, this is the only entry, the only access to the basement. We still have the front section of the basement finished. We're just replacing all the finishes, putting some new lights. So, we still have a recreation room, utility room, storage, and the bathroom. But additionally, we are finishing the back unfinished portion of the basement, creating a TV room. So, this is the first floor and the basement being one apartment. And then, as we move to second-floor apartment, accessing to this side entry, we're coming up to the second floor. And in this case, also, we switched, we put the bedrooms that were in the front, we put them in the back. And we're using, well, actually, we added another bedroom. So, there's three bedrooms now as opposed to two. And one in the front with a walk-in closet, two bedrooms in the back, and a kitchen and living dining area in the center portion of the building.
Now, you talked about switching the entrance. Did you not then change the plan and switch to have an entrance in the front also?
Well, in this proposal that was submitted on those two plans, two sheets, we did not have the entry in the front. We removed, as we can see on this elevation, with two windows only, and only an entry on the left side to the first-floor apartment and second-floor apartment. But we are proposing optional design. Here's the optional front entry with the litter platform, stair and platform. Front entry, additional front entry to this apartment accessing the bedroom number one, which will look like this. That will be more in line with what currently looks like.
As that is the proposal you now are presenting, is it not, with that front entrance?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
That is the proposal we are now presenting with the front entrance. Is that not correct?
Correct. That is the design that we would like to proceed with.
I have no further questions. It is witness, Mr. Chairman.
Board, questions for Mr. Lewandowski, please.
So, the plan that we're seeing, is that something that was handed in or is that something that was changed and I don't have?
Just changed, and I don't think you have it, Nicole. I'm sorry, we will get it to you. It was a last-minute alteration.
That's fine. Let's mark that portion, A1, so we know it's something...
No, 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 Nicole. We marked, first we marked, the first set of plans is A1. His first set of architectural plans is A1. That's what he first spoke to. That's what he first testified about.
Okay.
The original plan submitted to the board, I must say, the original plan submitted to the board, in A2 shows a front doorway on the front elevation that is laid out differently from the front doorway on the elevation that we just showed and which we will mark as A2. So, A1 is his plan. A2 is the revised floor plan for the ground floor. And A3 is the revised front elevation. Are we good with that?
Yeah, so I'm gonna need, I'm gonna need copies of A2 and A3, what we're marking as A2 and A3.
Michael will get those two tomorrow.
Great, thank, it's time to...
Thank you.
Questions, board? Does any member of the public have a question?
Hi, hi, hi. Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Go ahead.
If the revised plan of the, with a front door going into the bedroom, what was the rationale for that, speaking to the architect?
Well, I think the only rationale would be for keeping more with existing design that was there, which is existing house right now looks like this. I understood that this was an important factor for the board to preserve the look of the entry, keeping in line with historic look of this building. That's one reason. And the other reason would be for the owner to allow them.
Now, with that front door, will there be a hallway there or it's just gonna open up right into the front bedroom?
This is more like, I would say, exit, emergency exit only.
So, it's gonna, so it's gonna open up directly into the?
Into the bedroom, correct.
Into the bedroom?
It would be basically, I have this plan over here. So, we have basically entry to the bedroom, and serves more like additional exit.
And also, towards the middle of the house, you have an area designated as an office?
Correct. That's a little.
Office for the, office for what? Is there a business going on here or what?
I don't believe there's a business coming out of this building. That would be a testimony of the owner. But I believe right now, every residence needs a little office where people can do some work on the computer.
I don't think there's a, Mr. Stark's business is on Broad Street in Bloomfield, and this is certainly not for Mr. Stark. So, I think it's just a situation where with COVID-19, so many people are doing certain things remotely, and therefore, I think it's become more routine to show an office space in a building. And here, I think it's appropriate for that. And going back to the front door, that was more aesthetics than it was anything, because it just didn't look as nice as it does now with the front door in place.
Thank you, Mr. Gassion.
Any member of the public have a question for the architect? More than any other question?
I can't see unless we take the share screen down.
I will stop sharing then.
Thank you.
Sorry, go.
That's okay. No problem, no problem. I just wanna make sure, no, I don't see anybody's hands from the public.
All right. Thank you.
I have one more witness, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Lewandowski. Go ahead, Mr. Gassion.
Mr. Stimmel?
Yes.
Where? Okay. Mr. Stimmel, raise your right hand. Do you swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
State your name for the record.
William Stimmel, S-T-I-M-M-E-L. My professional address is P.O. Box 280, Rutherford, New Jersey.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Stimmel is a licensed engineer and licensed planner, and has testified on a number of occasions before this board. I'd be happy to qualify him if you would like.
He's appearing as both engineer and planner?
Mainly planner, but to touch of engineering if necessary.
Any discussion board? Mr. Stimmel, your license is both engineering and planning current, Mr. Harrison?
Yes, they are.
All right. Thank you. The board will accept Mr. Stimmel as an expert in engineering and expert in planning.
Mr. Stimmel, would you review the relevant sections of the Bloomfield zoning ordinance?
Certainly. The site is located in the R1B zone. It's a single-family, medium-density residential. In accordance with the Bloomfield ordinance, section 315-38A2, the permitted principal uses in this zone are primarily intended to be single-family detached dwellings. The site is an existing two-family. It's got a long history on the subject property. I don't think anyone is contesting that this is a lawfully pre-existing non-conforming use. The applicant intends to maintain that existing two-family residence on the property.
Mr. Stimmel, would you discuss the D2 variance that is relevant to this case?
Certainly. Because of the fact that the applicant is expanding the existing dwelling on the subject property and closing that front porch results in an increase of about a hundred eighty square feet or about eight and a half, nine percent over the existing residence. Because of that expansion, the applicant needs the D2 variance for the expansion of the non-conforming use. There's a little bit less, there's a little bit of a lesser standard than required for a D1 variance, which is the new use, which is not permitted in the zone, mainly as it relates to the positive criteria. In the case of these D2 variances, the positive criteria, the special reasons, can be justified by something as simple as showing aesthetic improvement to the subject property. As Mr. Gassion and the architect have both indicated, the applicant is making some changes to the exterior of the building. They're putting a peak on the roof. They're closing in the front porch. They're maintaining that existing door at the front of the residence, which would largely go toward providing more harmonious appearance with the adjoining residential properties in the neighborhood. I believe the board secretary has a photo exhibit that I submitted, which shows the subject property, but also some of the adjoining houses in the neighborhood, which I'm putting up on the screen now. Hopefully, you can all see.
I don't have that.
Oh, you didn't get it? Okay. I thought we had forwarded it to your office, but I'll.
I got a couple of things, but, yeah, I got a few things, but that's not in there.
We'll make sure you get it tomorrow then.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Can you share your screen, Bill, to put that up?
I believe I'm sharing my screen. Hopefully, you can all see it.
Yes.
Mark the photo exhibit in A4, please.
But at the moment, we can only see the PQ, Bill. Can you show the adjacent property? I need to shine.
Sure. I'm gonna roll through the slides. I just wanted to make sure everyone could see it and the exhibits were all straightened out. This is the subject property. You can't quite come from this picture, but there is a very slight peak to the roof as it exists now. But for all intents and purposes, if you're looking at it from ground level, it's flat. It's got this large open porch with a doorway and steps leading down to the grade of the remainder of the property. And it, to be perfectly honest, looks a little bit rundown. In addition to increasing the peak of the roof to bring it more in line with the houses in the neighborhood, there's gonna be an overall aesthetic upgrade to the property. As you're gonna see, I think you would agree that the properties in the neighborhood are largely well-maintained, aesthetically pleasing. When I went out, I looked at about twenty different properties, roughly ten on either side. About half of those are of the same general configuration as the subject property. They're long, narrow, two-family residences like the subject property is. They've all got peaked roofs. Ten of the twenty are of the same configuration as the site. All ten of those have the peaked roof. Eight of the, only two of the ten have a large open porch like that. They all have the door in the front, and I think with the changes the applicant is making to the site, I think it's gonna, again, provide aesthetic improvement, but also make it more harmonious with the houses in the neighborhood.
Can I just ask a quick question? I just need to know, are we, we're marking this whole packet of pictures, Mike, A4? I just need to know how many pictures there are?
Yes, the whole packet's A4.
Okay.
There's eleven, eleven slides in total.
Thank you very much, Mr. Stimmel.
So, that is the, that is the aesthetic benefit. The expansion that the applicant's proposing, again, is relatively minor in nature. It's about a hundred eighty square feet, eight and a half or nine percent of the size of the existing residence. It's gonna be a two-family. It's a two-family. It's gonna stay a two-family. The site as it's currently laid out has a detached garage at the rear, which provides a two-car garage with parking for two cars in front of it. And then, the driveway runs from the front of the property to the back. So, if you required additional parking for, you know, you had people over for a holiday or something like that, you could just park one after another going out to the street. The parking requirement is met. The aesthetics are being upgraded. As far as the negative criteria, like any variance application, the applicant has to demonstrate that the variance can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and will not impair the intent and purpose of the zone plan and zoning ordinance. Again, it's a very minor expansion. I don't see any possible impact to the public good or to the zone plan and zoning ordinance. The parking requirement's met. There's no impact to traffic, no additional noise, no additional residential units, et cetera, et cetera. It's a longstanding non-conforming use, which is simply being maintained by the applicant.
Mr. Stimmel, are there any C variance issues?
There are no C variances implicated by this application.
I have no further questions. It is witness, Mr. Chairman.
More questions for Mr. Stimmel?
Yes, it sounded like you, Mr. Stimmel, you said about there's no problem with the parking. The back, the existing garage is a two-car garage or?
It's a two-car garage, two cars side by side, and the driveway widens out behind the house, and there's room to park an additional car in front of each door. So, I haven't discussed it explicitly with the applicant, but I would think that one unit would get the left side and one unit would get the right side of the garage and then the parking space in front of it.
Any other questions for Mr. Stimmel? Any member of the public have a question?
No further witnesses, Mr. Chairman, and I am prepared to sum up if you'd like.
We have to hear from our own folks first.
I'm sorry. My apologies. I got answers.
Mr. Marucci?
Mr. Marucci, do you swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Just state your name for the record.
Anthony Marucci.
Thank you, Anthony.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, this application is strictly a D2 variance for the expansion of a non-conforming use. All of the bulk requirements are either met or existing non-conforming. As the planner mentioned, the parking is compliant also. The building footprint doesn't change, so there's no real addition. It's just changing the porch to a bedroom and enclosing it, making it into a bedroom, and obviously, replacing the roof with a pitched roof. And so, I have no comments about the application, other than the fact that I believe aesthetically it will look a lot better with the pitched roof and also with the door on the front facade of the building, it'll look a lot better aesthetically. Those are all my comments.
Mr. Marucci, more questions for Mr. Marucci? Anyone? Any member of the public have a question for Mr. Marucci?
Mr. Chairman, I've got a quick question to Mr. Marucci.
Go ahead.
Mr. Marucci, just with respect to the parking, I do understand that there are at least four parking places that are available, comfortably available, two in the garage and two directly in front of the garage. If this house, if it's ever sold and non-owner occupied, do you feel that those four spaces, as they are configured, are adequate?
Well, the answer is yes, because we do allow that. We allow a car to park in front of a garage, whether it's a single-family home or a two-family home. So, there is sufficient parking for the site.
Okay. And four parking places is enough for six bedrooms, a total of six bedrooms in two apartments?
Well, it's not a matter of the six bedrooms. It's, well, even under RSI, yes. The first floor would only need one point eight, because it's only a one-bedroom, and the second floor is a three-bedroom, I believe. So, it's not six bedrooms. It's four. It's a total of four bedrooms. So, four spaces would be adequate.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, Mr. Marucci. Nicole, Ms. Gassian, did we engage initial waiting for this one or not? I don't remember.
No, we did not.
All right. Thank you. Is there any member of the public who wishes to be sworn in and provide testimony?
I'll take a look. I don't see anybody's hands.
All right. Here, we're gonna see no one. Mr. Gassion, you may summarize, please.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, this is a D2 variance for an expansion of a non-conforming use. My client has a physical issue. That's part of the reason he's got Parkinson's. But the big thing here is there's a dramatic aesthetic improvement, and this application is approved. And as demonstrated by the picture shown by the planner, the proposal is much more consistent with the looks of the homes in the neighborhood than the current. As for the parking, there are four spaces, the two garage spaces, two spaces behind. And if you take a look at the plan, you'll see it's a pretty large lot, it's a hundred fifty feet deep. And actually, if the circumstance has ever required it, there's room to pull off to the side and park on the grass for an additional visitor, should that be necessary. As for the number of bedrooms, there's three bedrooms on the second floor, not on the first floor. So, the parking requirement's met, and then there's that availability on the glass if necessary. This is a longstanding non-conforming use, and obviously, it's been in the family of Mr. Stark for an extended period of time. Again, the property's fifty by one fifty. The addition really isn't an addition. It's a closing of the porch, but technically, that's a hundred and eighty square foot additional square footage. But again, that's where the porch is. So, there's no C variances whatsoever, nothing's being exacerbated, and certainly, there's no harm to the intent and purpose of the zone plan should this application be approved, and certainly, no substantial detriment. Actually, there's a benefit, a big aesthetic benefit. I thank the board, as always, for their time and attention to this application.
Thank you, Mr. Gassion. Time for public hearings closed. Time for discussion has begun. More who would like to leave the discussion?
I can kick us off, Mr. Chairman, if you'd like.
Go ahead.
I have to say, I like this application. I think the, a number accounts the improvements to the roof. Again, I think with the roof, the owner will probably see less maintenance issues, as well as, I like the consideration of the front door on the porch. I think that's aesthetically, along with the roof, will go a long way, as well as, you know, you know, there may be some safety issues down the road where, you know, it gives access to where you need it. So, I think that's a good consideration to have, and I don't have any issues with the parking, otherwise. That's it for me.
Thank you. Other discussion board?
Mr. Chairman, I concur fully with Mr. Wagner's comments. I think that this represents a distinct improvement to an existing two-family house, and I don't see any issues around this that maybe are concerning me.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Anyone else? Anyone else?
I have a, I just wanna support both my colleagues. I totally agree that this is the kind of investment that Bloomfield wants and hopes for. It's a wonderful renovation of a family home. It's going to bring more value to the property and the neighboring properties. The vaulted roof is, is what, the peaked roof is in keeping with the other properties. The front door is aesthetically pleasing and functional as well, providing additional egress, and it's just a great thing to see property owners putting money back into Bloomfield. So, I think this is a phenomenal project.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Anyone else? Here are no one. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve application as presented.
All right, Mr. Wagner moves. Is there a second?
Second, Ms. Oliver.
Seconds at hold, please.
Okay. Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Prince?
Yes.
Mr. Belmicki?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver? Mr. Stivers?
Yes.
Chairman Machowski?
Yes, the application is approved.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and the board for your time and attention. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and the board for your time and attention. Thank you.
Have a good.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, this is Michael Rubin.
Yes.
Almost nine o'clock, the next application's a D variance. It has an objecting attorney here as well. Perhaps might be an opportune time to ask whether there's any applicants further down the agenda who might have realized that they might not be heard tonight.
All right. So, Mr. Rubin, I think you're estimating that the next application may take the rest of you.
I think it's more likely than not. I would be surprised if we got, even if we got through this one, whether we got to 231 Broton Avenue or finished 231 Broton Avenue. Anything beyond that, I think is problematic.
All right. Does anyone down the list of the app case here wish to be adjourned?
Hi, all. This is Judy Fairweather on behalf of Bloomsingler AT&amp;T. We would like to be adjourned. Is it possible to be put up a little higher on the next agenda?
We take them in the order that is bound to be complete by the board secretary.
Oh, okay, so we should automatically go up then? If one ever speaks.
All business, unfinished, all business comes first, new business comes second, and within those two groups, the applications are ordered in the order they were deemed complete by the secretary.
And it's going to depend on which meeting we adjourn them to.
Oh, gotcha.
Can I just intervene, wait for a second? You are two away from the next application.
Yes.
So, if we finish 65 Park Avenue tonight and don't get to 231 Broton, then you would be second on the next agenda.
Not necessarily true.
Why? Who can't say that was adjourned?
Oh, wait a minute, wait, wait, wait. So, hold on. It depends on which meeting we put them on. If they go on for, I'm sorry?
They were ahead of both of the prior adjourned applications who were adjourned to the ninth of September. If she's adjourned to the ninth of September, why wouldn't she be before then?
If she's adjourned to the ninth of September, yes. Correct.
There you go. Thank you.
Will you tell the ninth?
Yes, this is a wireless application. We need to try to move this along anyway because this is a public service to some extent, so it would be good if we were to put this high up on the ninth.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Okay?
Yep.
Hey, thank you so much, we really appreciate it.
So, you want the ninth?
Yes, please, I'll take the ninth and announce the ninth so there's no further notice required.
All right, and you wave the time constraints?
Yes.
Wave the time constraints. Thank you.
Hold on, is that, hold on one second. Somebody just said hello? I don't know if somebody was trying to ask a question about that application?
There goes Mr. Babula, who has an application on the ninth as well.
Okay, so let's, we're going to finish one at a time, okay.
Okay, we're done, thank you so much.
Any discussion, board? No, we're not done yet, hang on.
We just made a motion.
Any discussion, board? Any discussion? All right, may I have a motion to adjourn 400 Hoover Avenue to the meeting of September ninth at seven p.m.? No further notice required.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Prince moves, is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Prince moved, is there a second?
Mr. Valnicky seconded.
Mr. Valnicky seconds. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? I'm hearing everything twice, which is what's causing my confusion.
We're hearing you twice too on some of the things you said.
Yeah, everything twice. Chairman, your connection's a little spotty.
Nicole, check his voting record, it might be twice.
400 Hoover Avenue is adjourned to September ninth at 7:00 p.m. No further notice is required.
Thank you all very much, have a nice evening.
Thank you, have a nice week. All right, is there anyone else who wishes to be adjourned?
Hello, my name is John Babula.
Go ahead.
I am the applicant and owner of 44 Jacob Street.
Go ahead.
We are letter F on your agenda.
Are you there? You could be adjourned on September ninth and behind some other folks. The possibility is a special meeting on September 22nd, or yeah, October, it's your choice.
Could we be moved to September ninth?
You can, but you're going to be behind these other lengthy applications.
What number might we be on September ninth, Paul?
All right, so, just a suggestion, really, I can't figure out who's going to be first, second, and third, all right, the second with everything going on. My suggestion is, as a bulk variance, that was the purpose of having the special meetings. So, why wouldn't we put them first as a bulk variance on the September 22nd meeting? This way, you'd be first on the agenda.
Does September 22nd work for you?
Yes, we'll take whatever we can get.
I'm just trying to get you heard, Mr. Babula.
Yes, please.
Okay.
Yes, please.
All right, and you're waiving time constraints? Is that correct?
Yes. What does that mean? I'm sorry.
We have a limited amount of time to act on your application. If you don't act in time, you get automatic approval. So, you wave time constraints and we re-adjourn you to the 22nd.
Okay.
If we dismiss it without prejudice, we start all over again.
Yes, that's fine.
Thank you. All right, board, may I have a motion to adjourn, where are we, 44 Jacob Street to the special meeting of September 22nd with no need for further notice. Mr. Babula, you will not have to renotice, republish, or mail any additional letters because this constitution, it's a legal notice, I hope the public will read. I have a motion, board?
All right, I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Johnson moves, is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Prince seconds. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed? Hearing no one opposed, 44 Jacob is adjourned to September 22nd with no further notice required. Thank you, sir, have a good evening. Anyone else wish to be adjourned?
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, my name is Bill Garcia from 675 East Passaic Avenue.
Yes, sir.
I'm going on like letter I and tell somebody who I can't meet today.
I doubt it.
So, probably I'll be asking for adjournment.
All right, September 22nd, okay for you?
That's fine with me.
All right, do you wave time constraints?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, board, may I have a motion to adjourn 675 East Passaic Avenue, which is Mr. Garcia's application, to the special meeting of September 22nd at 7:00 p.m. with no further notice being required.
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Valnicky moves, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed? Hearing no one opposed, 675 East Passaic Avenue is adjourned to September 22nd at 7:00 p.m. No further notice is required.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, other, you're welcome, thank you, have a good evening.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishes to be adjourned? Does anyone else wish to adjourn? All right, so before we start 65 Park, we'll take a 10-minute recess, board will be back at 9:15, please, and we'll take a little break. Clear my mind.
Thank you, Chairman.
At 9:17 p.m., the zone board adjustments back in session, and we're moving on to old business item 5C, which is the application of Ann Lauter as applicant and owner for minor site plan approval, a use case, bulk variance, and essential relief that may be required from zoning orders attached to Bloomfield to convert a one-family dwelling into four, a four-family dwelling in a residential one-family R1V zone, the premises known as VAC 11, block 249, lot 3, better known as 65 Park Avenue. And I believe that we have here this evening counsel for the applicant, there's also counsel for the objectors, so I'll first ask the counsel for the applicant to introduce him or herself, and then I'll ask the counsel for the objectors to introduce him or herself.
Okay, thank you. Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, if I may interrupt, I'd like to be refused from this application.
All right, Mr. Valnicky, you're refused, have a good evening.
Thank you.
Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, entering my appearance on behalf of the applicant Ann Lauter, John Vetery, 3 University Plaza, Hackensack, New Jersey.
And Phil Harrison on behalf of the victor. Vicki Morrison, the adjacent, listen, the adjacent property, I'm from Genova Burns in Newark.
All right, thank you, sir. So, the order of business this evening, or when we continue to other meetings if necessary, we'll hear from the counsel for the applicant first, and the applicant's expert witnesses. Then we'll hear from counsel for the objectors and any witnesses the objectors have. And third, we would hear from the public, if any member of the public wishes to be sworn in, to provide testimony, record that the applicant has given the opportunity to summarize the proposed hearing and the board begin the discussion, so that's how we'll do it. So, with that, counselor, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. Mr. Chairman, if I may, this is a D variance, and I'm just learning that there was a refusal of a member, I was not aware of that, and I was not on the meeting early on. I guess my first question is, number one, what was the reason for the refusal? I wasn't aware of that, and number two, how many members are we left with at this point?
Michael Rubin, there's no reason standing for the refusal, but we still have seven voting members, we actually have eight members here who would be eligible to vote. So, we have sufficient members here to vote.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Rubin, I just wasn't aware of what the reasons are.
I believe that Mr. Valnicky has a relationship, a familial relationship with a partner in Mr. Harrison's firm.
Oh, with the objectors, I'm confused.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
You're welcome.
So, tonight, we have an application for the property that is owned by Ann Lauter located at 65 Park Avenue, block 249, lot 3. I wanted to give a little bit of the history of how we got here, so I think it is important to understand that. Before I do that, I want to commend Ms. Cessenza, Mr. Marucci. We've had a lot of dialogue back and forth with them. These are not easy times to be doing these things and submitting applications, and this township, I work in a lot of townships, this township has been top-notch in answering questions and coming up with suggestions relative to format and also the application. So, with that said, I wanted to say thank you. So, there was an application, and I don't know the year, that was filed with this board for 65 and 67 Park, and I didn't handle the application. The application was for the demolition of both properties and the construction of a multifamily building of, I want to call it approximately 20 units. I believe it was submitted, I don't know if it was even heard, but it's important to note that in terms of how this application before you tonight evolved, and there was no objection to that, and I'm not sure if it was by tonight's objector or not, or another objector, and based upon that and relooking at the site and looking at the building that's currently there at 67, that application was withdrawn. A new application was filed in approximately April or May of this year with respect to just 65 Park Avenue. We received initial comment letters from Mr. Marucci and perhaps from Brightview as well, and as a result of some of the comments that we received, we had some dialogue with Mr. Marucci and our engineer, David Fantina, and made enhancements to the plan based upon that. They were then resubmitted within the necessary time, and those are the applications and the plans that are before you this evening. So, the enhancements that were made, we'll get into, and they have been submitted, so we don't have to mark them as exhibits, but I think it was important to note that. The whole, so 65 Park Avenue was acquired by Ann Lauter, who is the adjacent property owner. I believe it was by way of a foreclosure, the property was previously, I don't know if it was used as a boarding house, or it is a single-family home located in a single-family zone, but with that said, as our planner will speak to, the neighborhood is overwhelmingly multifamily in that neighborhood, both in Glen Ridge and in Bloomfield. The proximity to the train station is what attracted the applicant to the lot for the creation of a multifamily property with enhancements being made to the property. The application that's before you tonight includes the variance for the deuce variance and also for the density variance. So, our lineup tonight is Tom Messick, who is the architect, and Tom's going to speak to the architectural plan, some of the enhancements that have been made, and speak about the floor plans, as well as the functionality of the site in relation to the neighboring properties. He will be followed by David Fantina, who's our professional engineer, who has primarily had the opportunity to go back and forth with Mr. Marucci, who will answer the questions noted in Brightview's plans as well as Mr. Marucci's. And that will be, our final witness will be Frank Muleta, who is the professional planner. So, with that overview, I would like to introduce our first witness, Tom Messick.
Mr. Messick, can you raise your right hand? Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Just state your name for the record.
Thomas Messick, M-E-S-U-K.
Thank you. Mr. Vetery, you can qualify him.
Okay, Mr. Messick, if you would give the board the benefit of your professional and educational experience?
Sure, I'm a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey. I hold licenses in 32 additional states in the United States. I have practiced architecture since 1998, and I received my license, a graduate of NJIT, and I have appeared before this board many times as well as other boards throughout the country.
Any discussion, board? We'll have Mr. Messick.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Okay, Mr. Messick, your plans have been submitted to the board. If you'd like to call them up and share your screen, we can do that, so you can walk them through the elevations and the floor plans.
Sure, I'll share my screen now.
The revision mark is A1. Is this the full set or you have colored?
This is the full set, basically, that has been submitted.
Great, that'll be A1.
Okay, there's one minor change on the T1 sheet. There was some comments that we received from some of the professionals that had reviewed the plans. There were some minor discrepancies in the way we calculated our building height versus the engineering plans, as well as our lot coverage. This plan that you see on the screen right now does fix those two issues.
Whatever I don't have in my office, just make sure I get.
Sure.
Can you tell us what the revision date is on the set of plans that you're referring to on the screen?
Sure. The revision date is 8/13/21.
I do not have those.
This came about during the discussion last week, where we were going through the letters that we had received from the showing group and Brightview, and it did note the two discrepancies between my plans and the engineering plans that we will see shortly.
I want to ask you, before we begin your test, what's the plan I have, the last page of plans I have are 6/23/21.
Right.
At the beginning of your test, maybe you could just pull up sheet T1 and identify the changes that are in the plans before us versus the complete change, the plans that we, I mean, the plans on the screen with the plans there before us, that would make the record clear.
Sure.
Thank you.
So, the two issues that we had is, when we did our calculations, we had 34.42 feet for the height of the building, and lot coverage, we had 77.6% lot coverage, and then this chart down here has the breakdown of the pervious coverage calculations. So, this chart here, along with the height over here and the lot coverage here proposed, are the main issues that have been changed. So, if I go back to the days that, you can see that our height has been modified to 37.62 So if I go back to the these, that, you can see that our height has been modified to 37.1 feet from average grade, which is still looking for my condition, as well as our current lot coverage was modified from 77.6% to 77.8%, which matches the civil engineering drawings. I'm not going to get too much into the zoning. I'll let our engineer and our planner get into those issues. What I did want to do this evening is just walk you through the plans themselves. So on sheet A1, none of the other sheets in that set that were issued on 6.3 have changed. The only change was on the T1 sheet. So we have, what we're looking to do is a four-family unit with two units on each floor. One facing the front of the property, one facing the rear. And then, so that would be two per floor for the total of four units. Apartment one would be in front of the property, it would be approximately 790 square feet. It contains, you know, one bedroom, and we do have one office here that cannot be used as a bedroom because it has no windows. Our main entry, we have our access stairs up. We do have access to the basement. There is no basement plan shown, and I know that was an issue that had been brought up by some of the professionals. The basement is going to be used primarily for storage and for mechanical units. There is no living space whatsoever in the basement. I believe also one of the reports brought up the attic space. There is not very much attic space at all. We would have an attic access proposed, but it would not be accessible, you know, for anything, any living space at all. So getting back to the units, each one of our units, we do have a washer and dryer in each one. The back unit is approximately 934 square feet. And again, this unit back here is now a two-bedroom because we had the space to do the extra windows. Second floor is very similar to the first floor layout. It's a carbon copy of what's happening on the first floor. So we have an apartment number three towards the front, at 790 square feet. Apartment four at the back, again, 934. Moving on to the elevations, our street elevation, we have our front entry here. We do have a handicap ramp that goes along the front of the building to the sidewalk along the side, that'll provide our ABA access. Each of the units will have to be made to be accessible if the need arises. Our side elevation along the driveway, we have our windows for the apartments here. And then along the back, we have a few windows for those bedrooms along the back of the property. And then the side view that faces 67 Park, again, just with the windows facing that, the building on the corner. The properties surrounding this location are all multifamily properties, going down Park Avenue and across the street. And then in fact, on the corner of Edgewood Road, and I believe that's in Glen Ridge, there's a large multifamily building on that location. If there's any other questions, that's pretty much all I have as far as the architectural testimony.
Mr. Messick, just a question for you with regard to the washer and dryers. Where are they located?
Each unit has an internal washer dryer. The front apartment, because it is a little bit smaller, a little bit tighter, and having enough space for some closets, we do have a stackable washer dryer in the middle of the unit here. And the back apartment has a side-by-side washer dryer that's like right off the main entry to that unit.
Thank you. So the basement, as you testified to, there's no living space there, purely for storage and mechanicals?
Correct. We would have our HVAC systems and our water heaters in the basement.
Thank you. Maybe to bring you back up when we discuss the air conditioning units, but I would like the engineer to discuss that, and then we can perhaps bring you back up on that. But I have no further questions at this time.
Mr. Messick, can you take down the share screen in case, this way I can take, thank you.
You're welcome.
Chairman, you're on mute.
Board, any questions for the architect?
Mr. Chairman, I do have questions. I don't know if we will need to put the drawing back on the screen, but I do have a question to the architect with regard to the materials that are being used on the exterior of the building. Is this entirely, is it vinyl siding? Is that what I understand?
If you'd like, I can put the drawings back, or just, you know, to go through it. I believe we would be looking to do probably cement board siding and cultured stone at the base. So everything from the floor line down would be a stone, a cultured stone, veneer. And all the siding would be a hardy plank cement board siding.
And do you know what the color of that siding?
I mean, I chose their color at this time.
Okay, all right. And on the front facade specifically, unless the renderings have changed from what I received in the mail, it looks like you've repositioned the entire building so that it's no longer parallel to the street. It is now at a diagonal to the street. Is that correct?
It is, that is correct. Now, what it is, it is parallel with the lot lines. If you look at the plot plan, the, both lot lines, left and right, are skewed to the street lot line. So in order to make the building work along with the circulation around the building, we made that building parallel to the lot lines.
Okay. And on the front facade specifically, I don't know if you can put that back up on the screen? I had a quick question about that. Okay? That's it, yeah, thank you. So if we look at the front facade, on the left-hand side there, we've got basically a large blank space there, a large wall that has nothing on it. What is the dimension of that wall that is facing the streets?
I'm just going to go back to the... It would be...
So that would be the kitchen, is that correct?
That's correct. So that's the back of the kitchen cabinetry, so to give you that dimension.
Okay. And so if we're looking at the kitchen, I guess this has kind of changed my question a little bit. It looks like, if I'm looking at the sink area, those are windows there that are in front of the street?
Yes.
Oh, it's, gotcha, okay. And so the reason that that front wall is entirely blank is because there's, it looks like a refrigerator and cabinets and such there?
Correct. And then that span, to answer your original question, is 10 foot 6.
Okay, all right. And then we go back to the site drawing, where it shows the structure, the driveway, et cetera. There we go. So now that you've got the driveway running parallel with the lot line, I'm particularly interested in the dwelling that is immediately, I guess it would be immediately to the east or to the right of the drawing here.
Right.
Since we've got the driveway running right alongside the property line, how far is that from the structure, from the neighboring structure?
I just don't have that information. I'm not sure if David or engineer may have that.
I think our engineer should be able to at least, if he doesn't have it on the plans, he should be able to estimate it when he comes up.
Okay, all right. All right, and I guess one last question. On the garage specifically, does the garage require any repair or improvement?
No, it's actually just constructed within the last, what can I say, 12 to 18 months, somewhere in that range.
Okay. And it easily accompanies three vehicles?
Yes, it's oversized for three vehicles.
Okay. All right, thank you. I don't have any further questions right now.
If it pleases the board, Commissioner Johnson's comments about that blank wall, I frankly never noticed it until you mentioned it, Commissioner, but I see that that can easily be remedied. So if it pleases the board, the windows, the sink can be in the front, so the windows would be there. So that's something, if it pleases the board, we can make that change to alleviate that 10.6 feet of blank wall space. And I think that's a very good observation.
All right, thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Go ahead.
Mr. Musk?
Messick.
Messick, sorry. I don't know if my question's for you or for the engineer, but is it a reason why you did not choose to move the building back 10 extra feet to have the setback at 20, as opposed to where it's placed now?
Primarily to accommodate parking behind the building. And I think your engineer can probably testify a little bit more as to the placement of the building, but primarily so that we would have the room behind the building for parking and circulation.
Okay, that was my only question, and thank you.
Other questions, board?
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you. For Mr. Messick. Regarding the way that you've situated the proposed building, where it's within the sightlines of the property, but not oriented squarely to the street, have you given thought to the impact that that has as opposed to keeping sort of the contemporaneous look that the rest of the street has with the pre-war buildings, where they're all squared up to the street? And what was the reasoning, I know you said, so that you could... Can you just clarify your rationale?
Like I mentioned, primarily because if we were to rotate the building, and we would wind up bringing the building closer to one of the side lot lines, and we would eliminate then the circulation, like from the back, we have a concrete walk to get from the parking area to the front of the building that is ADA accessible, so people did not have to go down the driveway. If we did square it up to the property, it would be virtually impossible to to get the building on the site with the required circulation around it. The rear property line too is also on an angle to Park Avenue, the property line along Park Avenue. So for three out of the four property lines, our, you know, building and the garage are square with the actual property lines, the sidelines and the rear yard line, as opposed to the street. But it's just kind of a, the reason you're being is just because of the site as it exists today.
Okay, so I'm hearing your explanation. Do you say from an aesthetic point of view that it would be more appealing to have it in scope with the rest of the street? So that there would be a common street skate?
I mean, the angle is not that severe, and I don't think it will have that much of an impact on the street facade itself.
What about the fact that its building is moved forward? Because you have this lovely setback all the way along Park Avenue. On the one side, you have the church and all the buildings along the opposing side. And then the other Park Avenue buildings, you know, are all set back. And then you're coming forward, except for the corner building, you know, creates a different sense of space. Would you agree?
Yeah, I mean, anytime you change anything, you change the sense of the space that it's in. I'm just looking now, it looks like the building to the right of us is also parallel to the side property line, from what I can tell, and...
It's straight on the street. I've driven by it.
Can I just, we've made a decision. Mr. Williams, can I just, Michael, would Mr. Chairman, can I just interject here for just one second? And I'm going to refer to Mr. Marucci on this, because he's much more knowledgeable about this than I am. But there's a prevailing setback obligation in the ordinance. And I think that this plan indicates that the required setback is 20 feet, because that's what the zoning requires in the zoning table. But in fact, someone needs to figure out what the prevailing setback is, because that overrides the front yard setback. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ruben. I'll wait for additional comments from our planner.
So that begs a question, has the prevailing setback been calculated?
Correct. I mean, I'm not, you know, the building next door at 67 Park is really almost, it's either at or beyond the front lot line. So whatever that average will be pursuant to the calculations required under the ordinance, which I haven't really pulled out yet, again, I refer to Mr. Marucci, he knows much more about this than I do. However it's supposed to be calculated, it should be calculated. And then we can figure out what's required versus what's proposed. Thank you.
So I'll ask the architect, is that data available, or is that something that you'll need to talk to?
I don't have that data. I'm not sure the engineer may have that. I'm not...
All right. We'll ask the engineer the same question. Thank you. Other questions for the architect?
I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Mr. Messick, I hope I'm not stealing Mr. Williams' thunder here, but I'm just curious regarding the closet in the office space that you have in here. You know, we've seen these on several other applications. And I see that there's no door on the entry and the threshold for this room in the building, but what other abilities will be put in place to ensure that this does not become another room or another bedroom?
I mean, it's something that could be written into the lease. I mean, people actually use their room as, you're not, you can't really determine that, but... So we have no windows in the room, we don't have a door. I mean, I suppose if we had to, we could hopefully remove the closet from there. It's not, you know, detrimental to the office. It was just an extra storage closet in the space. But, you know, like I said, that could be relocated or repurposed to be apartment behind you. Just have a really deeper closet, or, you know, the walk would come straight across where the washer dryer is, and eliminate that closet.
Okay, thank you.
Questions, board?
Actually, I'm just a little confused about the closet that's being proposed to be eliminated. Which can you show on the, I think you took the Mac down, or I'm not seeing it.
So be in the office space on the, in the middle of the...
Tom, why don't you show that on the plan? This closet works here.
There, I see it.
Uh, like I was saying, to close this door off, take this wall straight across here, and then just make this closet a little bit deeper facing apartment two and apartment four on the second floor. And that would eliminate the closet off the office.
Right. Well, I'm in agreement with my colleague. It does look like that would easily be, or could be made into a bedroom, so that's a solution. Thank you.
And the applicant is fine with that. Thank you, Commissioner.
Other questions, board? About the board's experts, any questions for the board?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just a couple of questions. Mr. Messick, you're, both on your plan and on the engineer's plan, you're showing the four air-conditioned condensers in the rear left corner of the property. I scale approximately 60 feet before you even reach the building. Obviously, you're going to put underground piping in for them, but explain to the board, what happens to the efficiency when you're so far away from the building?
Oh, that was something we had actually discussed earlier.
Actually, if I may, Mr. Messick, so, Mr. Marucci, thank you for that. This is something that we discussed today, and when I had alluded to bringing Mr. Messick back, we have, I've had an opportunity to speak with Mr. Harrison earlier this morning, the objector's attorney, and that was one of the concerns raised, was the location of those. And I think you raised another good question... one of the concerns raised was the location of those, and, and I think you raised another good question about the efficiency of those units if they were placed so far away from the dwelling. Um, Mr. Fantina is going to show that a, um, a suggestion has been made uh, looking at another project that we've done with this out in, in another town where they use these carrier systems that are mounted on the building themselves. Um, so that was, that was an option, and, and Mr. Fantina is, uh, going to discuss that and done in a way that doesn't interfere with the handicapped accessible sidewalk. Um, so that, that is, um, that's one of the enhancements that Mr. Fantina is going to speak about tonight.
Okay, question number two. The handicap parking space is located in the rear of the building, and access to the building is in the front, and I scale again, the, the sidewalk or, or ramp actually is probab- approximately a hundred feet from that handicap space until you get to the front of the building. Um, I guess my question is, is, is that an appropriate design, ha- have that handicap space so far away from, from the building?
Um, uh, the, the way the property is currently configured, there's really no other locations to do, you know, handicap space. Um, we felt that keeping all the parking in behind the building is more, uh, appealing from a curb, appeal point of view. I, it is a little bit of a distance, but, um, the sidewalk on the side of the building would be level, and only the ramp in the front of the building would be, you know, the, uh, the ramp portion lacks at the front of the building.
I understand the ramp is only twenty feet, it is, it's just, it's a sidewalk, but still, it's a hundred feet from the, from the handicapped parking space to the front entrance, that's, that was my question.
No, I, I understand, um, I'm not aware of any, uh, limits on how far somebody would have to travel. Um, I don't know if, maybe, perhaps our engineer can speak a little bit better to, uh, get the, uh, the requirements and the distance.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Did, uh, I, Mr. Ruben, do you want me to, do you want me to speak about the prevailing setback now, or do you wanna, should I wait till you run that?
Why, why don't you wait till you testify?
Okay, that's fine.
Unless, unless, unless it might affect the forthcoming testimony of the engineer.
Well, if, if I need...
Mr. Marucci may be sworn in.
Sure.
Okay, do you swear the testimony you're about to give us the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
State your name for the record.
Anthony Marucci.
Thanks, Ant.
Mr. Chairman and members of the board, there is a section in the ordinance under three fifteen dash thirty-five feet under yard regulations number four. And it says here, "A setback shall be deemed established if the front yard setbacks on, on the four lots nearest the subject's property on the same side of the street are either all greater than or all less than the permitted front yard setback in the zone. If an established set, if an established setback is present, the front yard setback of the subject property shall be the average front yard setback of those nearest four lots." Now, on the one side, there's one property, on, on the west side, because that's a corner property. So, so really, the applicant needs to measure the setbacks on the four nearest lots. And, and again, if they're all greater than or all less than, then that's the prevailing setback.
We'll ask Mr. Fantina when he comes up, I, I don't believe that's done, but that is something that we can certainly...
It might change the location of your building, I don't know until I have that information.
Understood.
Yeah, Mr. Marucci. Uh, does the, uh, council for the objectors have any questions for the board?
Yes, just a couple of quick questions. Uh, Mr. Messick, you had indicated that most of the properties surrounding this were, um, multifamily. Of the three lots that directly border the property, how many of those are currently lawful single families?
Uh, I believe it's only one, but again, the engineer, I think it would be better to testify what the, uh, or the planner, uh, perhaps would be better.
The planner does plan on testifying, though.
Okay, okay, I will ask that question to the planner. Um, if you remember in the beginning, your, um, uh, recalculation, the impervious cover, and I couldn't quite see exactly what you changed, but like, my question is, it wasn't clear from the original plans what, based on the numbers that were used, whether the entire handicap sidewalk along the west side of the building, whether that was included in the impervious cover calculation?
It is.
And do you know what that square footage is?
Uh... Let's see, we have, the sidewalk on the side of the house is two hundred and ninety-eight square feet.
Okay, I have no further questions for this witness.
Thank you, does any member of the public have a question?
Um, Mr. Chairman, Michael Lubin again. Um, I'm, I'm just gonna answer, when the plan I have shows the walk inside of house is two hundred and fifty-five square feet. Is that...
That was part of the discrepancy that I had spoke about in the beginning, um...
Aaron, that's, oh, I got it, you got it, thank, that's why I want to clarify, thank you.
Does any member of the public have a question for Mr. Messick?
I do.
Go ahead.
Okay.
Hold on, hold on.
Excuse me?
Do I have to be sworn in or anything?
Not to ask a question, this time it's only for questions.
I do need, I do need the, your name and address, please?
Yeah, I, I'm John Alvarez, um, thirty-nine Fontaine Avenue. Also, to be fair, I'm also a member of the open space committee from Lubin Field.
Okay, thank you.
Um, in the last presentation, the person was very careful to, to show us models of how the, that residence, a much smaller residence, fit in aesthetically to the entire neighborhood.
Top right, top left.
I mean, I'm the guy with entrant's column.
Gotcha, gotcha.
Alright, alright, so, um, so anyway, uh, we've heard this Brown talk about setbacks and how they are against it, we talked about, another person talked about the odd siding. Do we have any models to see exactly how this is aesthetically fixing, I mean, that we can actually see? Because it seems to me that smaller project could do this sort of aesthetic comparison. This much larger, especially as, as this Brown said, this historic pre-war area, this is a real consideration, I think the, the architect should show us what this will actually look like in the environment that it's, not just a, a plan. A different diagram, a different schematic, this is...
That hasn't been done at this, to this point.
But the other, a smaller project was able to do that, why couldn't you?
Um, we didn't know it was necessary for the application, we've done other applications, um, you know, we're planning...
Did you do something, a historical analysis of this property, going back to the pre-war period? Have you talked to Rich Watwell, who is in this community, who, who looks through the aesthetics of this community? I mean, you seem to have done the homework on what you're doing with Lubin Field. Okay, sorry, be rhetorical. But that was my question, have you really done an aesthetic analysis that we can see that you've really done due diligence to protect this historical era, the area? I mean, it doesn't look like you have.
No, we have not.
Okay.
At least, my firm is not, I don't know from anybody else.
So this is not good. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Our professional has a question, Mr. Williams.
Uh-oh, alright, Mr. Williams.
Thank you, Secretary, Mr. Chair, Bruce. Good evening, Mr. Messick, good evening, commissioners. And Mr. Messick, just a couple of quick questions, uh, one of the commissioners stole a, a, a one of the questions, just for my member, um, a few clarifications. So is, is there a demolition plan for this, this matter?
The existing structure would be demolished, um, as currently on site.
And as far as you're aware, the, um, garage as depicted on the plans will continue to exist and only be used for ridiculous storage, is that correct?
That's correct.
Would you review the height calculations for us, I know you mentioned in your introductory comments that you did make a change, can you just go through that one more time, please?
Uh, yeah, I'll, I'll also defer to David from Pada when he gets up, uh, to, you know, speak more on the elevations. When we originally did our calculations, we just took our, you know, uh, we didn't go average grade. So we were a little bit shorter in height, um, the allowable height is forty feet. Our building from average grade is thirty-seven point one feet.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, um. Uh, can I add a question per my services? Uh, will the engineer talk about trash in the site, or is that in your opinion?
Yes, that'll be, uh, part of the engineer's...
Okay. Um, in terms of basement, is there a basement in the proposed structure?
Yes, as I stated in the beginning of my testimony, we do have stairs down to a basement, the basement will only be used for um, mechanical equipment, hot water heaters, the furnaces, and perhaps, you know, limited storage for the occupants, but there will be no living space in the basement above.
Okay, so thank you for that clarification, particularly about the living space on the, or to our board engineers as to whether uh, plans for the basement should be shown, that was the, the gist of my question, so thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chairman, that's it for me for now.
Thank you, Mr. Williams, any other questions? Any other questions? Mary Silverman, thank you, Mr. Williams.
You're welcome.
The next question?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, before we let Mr. Messick go, with respect to, with respect to the existing house, Mr. Messick, we had some, uh, comments from a resident relative to the historic nature. Is the site currently not a faux brick and bi- and aluminum, not vinyl, aluminum siding that was probably done in the fifties, sixties?
Yes, I'm looking at that right now, it does have what appears to be a faux brick facade with, um, aluminum siding on, um, the sides and up on the, uh, the existing dormers.
And in, in your opinion, would a, uh, hardy plank wood look structure with cultured stone be more in keeping with the stone and some of the wood houses in the neighborhood?
It would, it, you know, the, um, the hardy plank siding does have a wood, um, look to it, so it would look like it was an older, afterwards style home, um, you know, given the, uh, with a more, you know, modern material that has, you know, more, um, you know, that convenient for like weathering and, uh, you know, being out in the elements, uh, as opposed to the wood. But, um, yes, it would be an enhancement to, you know, what is actually on the existing building currently.
Thank you, I have no further questions.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
Uh, quick question to follow the council's, uh, query to Mr. Messick. Mr. Messick, uh, I, I know that you answered the question that it appears, and, and I'm struck by the prior member of the public's question of whether historic analysis has been conducted. Are you saying that you did do some sort of historic analysis for the site, or is it based purely on kind of a windshield survey, if you will, for lack of a better term?
Um, I have been to the site, and I do, you know, recall seeing it, I was looking at some photos, you know, and answering the question, just because I haven't been there in a few weeks. But, um, you know, I have been to the site, you know, the site does, it is a brick facade, you know, a, uh, brick veneer, and, you know, the sides are, you know, white aluminum siding.
Do you know that the original construction might have been, in other words, was the original construction also brick veneer, or?
That I do not know, I'm sure if I can basically go, go back that far.
Mr. Messick, just for clarity here, uh, do you know if this property is within or without the Lubin Field historic district?
I do not know, you know, for certain, nobody has bought any of that up during any of their reviews, you know, with all the other, um, the reviews from Issuing or Bright View Engineering, uh, or Mr. Marucci's, you know, uh, review, nobody's said anything prior about, uh, historic, um, you know, landmarks, but, um, I do have no personality.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Messick.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Tom, our next witness is David Fantina, professional engineer.
Okay, Mr. Fantina, can you raise your right hand? Do you swear the test- Do you swear the testimony that you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Just state your name for the record.
David Fantina, F as in front, A in front, T in the end.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, Dave. Oh, hold on, uh, so if you would, give the board the benefit of your educational and professional experience. Yes, I've never testified in front of this board before, but I am a professional engineer licensed in the state of New Jersey. I've been licensed since nineteen eighty-seven, I hold a bachelor's degree and a master's degree in civil environmental engineering, both from Martha University, I've been a proprietor of Fantina Engineering since two thousand and one. I retain, uh, peer in front of boards all around the state, and I did prepare the plans that are before you this evening.
Thank you. Question board? Uh, Mr. Fantina, is your license current?
Yes, it is.
I will accept Mr. Fantina as the expert engineer.
Thank you very much. Great, alright, Dave, uh, you're up. Can I share my phone, if that's okay?
Sure.
Sure. Okay, and what I've got here, these are the plans that were submitted to the board, and you should all have these, that are dated, I believe revised, um, June seventeenth of this year, for sheets, and specifically referring to sheet number two, which is in front of you right now. And, and go through the plan, I'm gonna try to see if I can answer some of the questions that were asked to the architect.
Mr. Fantina, can I stop you here? Are you, are you marking the full set of plans, or just, or just excerpted sheets?
Well, that's not the whole set, I'm not sure which ones we may be referring to, we're the force of discussion and any questions.
So we've got engineering plans are marked as A two, thank you.
Thank you.
So, uh, sheet two, which is in front of the board right now, shows side by side existing conditions and closed conditions. And as was, was, uh, mentioned, there is an existing single family house before being removed. There's an existing driveway along the property line which has been removed. All improvements on the spot were being removed, with the exception of the road, the new three-car garage in the rear. Uh, switching on the light, we have a proposed four-family room which is changed over here. We have a new driveway essentially the same orientation, but it runs more along the property line. And member of the board members have already, uh, remarked that the main building is not, um, parallel with the road, but it's actually parallel with the side lot line. I would point out that the property to the west of us is also in the same orientation, it's, it's parallel with the lot line, and actually, it's on the lot line, it's got a zero, a, a zero setback on that one. And, um, as far as the prevailing setback is concerned, I should say that Mr. Marucci, um, he certainly explained very well to me. Uh, and we don't have a prevailing setback, because the property on, to our west is less than the required twenty feet, it's essentially zero. And the property, uh, to the right, or the east, is further away from the road than the existing houses. The existing house is twenty point five feet. So we have, right away, the house, the building to the, uh, west is closer than the required twenty. The building to the east is further than the required twenty, so there is no prevailing setback. Now, the twenty-foot setback does a whole lot here. Uh, we're expecting a variance, as was said, uh, for ten point four feet. And I believe through the board, we was asked, why are we doing that instead of moving the, the building back? And essentially, it's a matter of space with the existing three-car garage, which we're going to make use of for two parking spaces for residents in the building. Uh, we don't have any, any room to build this, and still provide twenty-four feet back out, and a required eighteen feet for the parking spaces. Uh, Mr. Reddick indicated that we had had some discussions with Mr. Marucci, and this is his review and other professionals' reviews, we did make some, some substantial changes to the plan. Uh, one is that originally, we did not have a handicap space here, we simply had separate parking spaces. Uh, the department indicated that it was important to fill out an ADA space. Then it's been added, a very accessible space with a foot-wide, uh, lawn area. Both, uh, both of us, I grabbed some three of us professionals, uh, we're not happy with the fact that originally, we had, uh, residents or visitors had to walk down the driveway to get the front door. So we've added the three-foot-wide... So we've added the three foot wide, uh, walkway, which is essentially flat until you get to the front. And it's, it's an ADA ramp which meets the, the requirements. In order to do that, one of the, um, AC units which originally had been moving adjacent to the building, right to the back. However, as, um, Mr. Marucci said, you do lose, uh, same efficiency with that. Uh, the only ones you can run that distance, because they're not as efficient. Uh, and in order to the point, as Mr. Marucci said, is, uh, preliminary conversations with the objectors council. Uh, one of the things that the objector felt strongly about is that these ACs are too close to their property. So, uh, in our internal discussions today, we said that we would take these four units, move them back to this location using a narrower carrier type, um, AC, which is between thirteen and sixteen inches wide. They can either be placed underground or can actually be far from the building, and that would still give us room to get the handicap, or actually from the walkway slash handicap accessible entrance, uh, past them into the front. So we would, um, same time that we're not going to be moving these units back essentially to the location where they were originally shown. In addition to that, we had shown, um, a dumpster location back here, and this was simply a concrete pad. Initially, it was gravel. Uh, Mr. Marucci, the original, uh, review said gravel was not appropriate, should have caused the pad to have actually done. We had a board on the floor, or a solid fence rather along the parking lot. I had thought that that was, um, a problem at school. However, we are going to, uh, place these, these units in, um, in some kind of enclosure. And there's a number of things we can use. Um, since it was only four units, what we're, what we're thinking, to tell you the truth, is, um, one of those, uh, hole-in-one type trash can storage locations, like they essentially block the unit from any neighbors. You can't see them. You can go in there, put their trash can in there or recycle, and they can, they can take it out again that way. So there's then this, uh, trash enclosure area, or track, really, this trash area won't be enclosed, uh, and, and not be unsightly to any neighbors or anybody standing in the back of the property.
Hey, Dave, if I may interrupt you one moment, one of the other items I spoke about with Mr. Harrison was that location, and, um, the applicant would be willing to move them to the eastern side of the garage, if that pleases the board and pleases the objector.
Uh, okay, that's, that's not quite, I was not quite as mature over there, but I, I believe we can accommodate that. Um, it's, it's not quite as, as ready, but I think we could accommodate that if that's what the objector wanted. So we could, we could place them on the.
Yeah, based on the size of those, that we had, uh, one for recycling and one for garbage. Um, and then the applicant is, um, you know, responsible for bringing the garbage out to the front, or rather their, um, their maintenance person.
Right, we can certainly put that on the side then, and, and so, uh, the AC units, you say, of the, of the trash, uh, area as well, would, would be at the side of the garage.
It would give the opportunity then to enhance landscaping on that end, which was another concern, so to, um, to add vegetation to that area.
You know, we'll also show some vegetation in the back, but now this area will be grown and we can certainly place some, some bushes or small trees in that area as well.
Thank you.
Uh, essentially, I think that's, uh, that's, I don't know if you know what we're, what we're paying here. I don't think I missed anything. Um, I do have, do you want updated reviews from Mr. Marucci? Before I, before I do that, perhaps, um, if the board would like, I, I want the planner, but perhaps I should run through the, um, the, uh, listing of the variances.
Sure.
And the variances are, um, spelled out, and, and on the front, Mr. Williams, uh, one or actually, there are two, uh, visitor's variance, D one, they're both, weren't family, multi, uh, family residents, instantly family zone. Um, our planner will discuss the rationale for that. Uh, desert variance, uh, we don't see the residential density of the single family. Again, Frank's letter, the plan will be addressing that. One of the four scene variances, minimum front yard required is twenty feet. We're showing ten point four, as I indicated. Uh, once again, the property to our west is at zero. The property to our east is greater than twenty. Maximal living coverage is thirty-five percent. We're selecting an additional, an increase of that thirty-six point four. Maintenance coverage, sixty percent is allowed. We're at seventy-seven point eight. And the number of parking spaces we have, six, eight are required in four minutes. Again, the six include three in the existing garage and three outside, including one, um, handicap accessible space. Those are those are the variances, um.
Thanks, Dave. Um, if, if you would, you have the opportunity to review Mr. Marucci's earlier letter from May, which gave rise to the plans that are before the board this evening, but you were also on receipt of the July sixteenth letter.
That's correct.
We've addressed most of those points, but I do want you to speak about the light, the, uh, mounted lighting as well as the drain.
Okay, so we, we showed, um, that when we build out the lights, uh, this to our thing, I think, is, is well, to be one key application, uh, it's allowing these four families, very small parking lot. So the lights that we're proposing would be, um, on the garage face and on the building face to, um, to light the walkway and the, and the driveway, and they would all be architectural type lights.
Yeah, they would be shielding, they would be shielded to avoid any spillage onto neighboring properties?
Absolutely, yes.
Thank you.
And, and they're faced downward.
And with respect to the drywall?
Respect to the drywall, um, going to, uh, essentially, we're showing a drywall, um, and let me see if I can get to that. That's maybe sheet three. So we're proposing, well, compared with the one on the side here.
Sure.
We're proposing a drywall in, in our own parking lot. Uh, all of the roof layers and virtually all of the impervious surfaces will be drained to this drywall. Uh, Mr. Marucci says he has no, um, objection with the drywall itself, when we need to do sound testing, which we're happy to do. He did, uh, say he was, um, unhappy with the, or was upset with the location of the overflow here. And when I spoke to him about that, and don't want to put words in your mouth, Mr. Marucci, but I think that, uh, we agree that if this works off it to approve this, uh, application, that you and I as engineers, and the engineer will work this out to your satisfaction.
Now, with, um, with respect to the current conditions on drainage, is there any water retention measures on this property now?
No, there are not.
Thank you. Uh, I'm sure Mr. Marucci will see if we've missed, uh, items in his letter, but those are, I don't have any other questions at this time.
Mr. Williams, I'd like to pay a dollar. The board questions for, uh, Mr. Fantina.
Mr. Williams has his hand up.
All right, please.
Um, you did say board, so don't I trump Mr. Williams?
Oh, I apologize. I can't see everybody.
Yep, sorry.
And they actually put their hands up, so I had.
Should I stop, should I stop showing her?
Yes, for now, just I.
All right, Mr. Prince, go ahead. Mr. Williams lost his turn.
I just have one question for engineer. Um, on your letter, uh, thank you for your explanation as for your reasons, uh, for the setback and all. I appreciate your, your, uh, explanation. But on your letter, you, you presented, you had a question here, number eight, a ten foot wide driveway was gonna be questioned. What is that about?
Oh, okay, um, okay, with Marucci indicated that the, the ten foot wide, uh, driveway, essentially, um, the property is only twenty feet wide. So, uh, ten foot wide was the, uh, or, well, if they're included, it's, it's functional. Uh, obviously, it's a lot for residences. Um, we don't think it'll be much, you know, in and out traffic at the same time. And, and very much if somebody's pulling in while someone else is pulling out, someone's going to have to wait, as in our original situation. I should say, though, um, Mr. Prince, you charted my memory. Uh, one thing on Mr. Marucci's letter was, uh, we're requesting a rider from curb. But, um, based on the discussions with the applicant and, and rest of the team here, we will be providing curb along, uh, easternly property line to prevent water getting onto the neighboring property over there.
Okay, I see. So that's why it's eleven foot eight inches, that's on your drawing, is now gonna be ten feet, uh, I'm sorry, eleven feet, eleven point eight feet, it's gonna now be ten feet because of the curbing we have to put in?
Yeah, eleven foot eight inch was actually a setback to the corner of the building.
Right.
So that's gonna remain, but there's gonna be a ten foot wide driveway there with, with a six inch curb.
Okay, that's, that's what I wanted to understand. Thank you.
Hey, Dave, can you speak about the snow removal? There, there was to come, and it wasn't in Marucci's letter, it was in Brightview's letter, number four. Uh, and, and I think now with this area that we have, uh, created on the western side of the garage, there may be more potential for, um, an area for excess snow, but if you would speak about that.
Yes, uh, essentially, this, this question has been asked several times in the last four or five years as it's a long, had the snowstorms. And, uh, as, as I generally say, uh, in certain truest case, if you have got a, a major snowstorm, or eighteen inches or or two, bullish snows or weak, like we get sometimes, uh, the, someone is going to have to, uh, contract with someone to hold snow. There's not gonna be room on this site to put, see, uh, living near that snow on the site is still, uh, seems usable for this basis.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I, I have a question for the planner, if I could.
It's the engineer.
Oh, the engineer, I'm sorry. Yes, the engineer, I, I apologize. Um, yes, I, I'm, with respect to, um, so now that we are reorienting, um, the house, um, so that it's parallel with the sightlines rather than the street, um, I'm too very interested in the driveway, since we are essentially swinging the driveway over several feet. Um, it, it seems to me, I, I have to admit, I'm looking at, you know, a Google satellite image. It seems to me that if we're swinging that driveway to run parallel to the property line on the east side, it's gonna come very close to the house that is on the, that is immediately of the east. And I'm just wondering, do we know what that distance is from the driveway to, to the structure, to the neighboring structure?
Uh, the, the, I, I hate to ask that question, I mean, the story that I have done does not show much picture. I would, I would play the same thing, we're looking at up here, the, um, the three view. And I, I would say that that house is maybe six or seven feet away from the existing driveway.
Right.
Uh, and that driveway is, is right now about three or four feet off the property line. So you're only two or three feet closer to that house.
Okay, so, so in your, as we, we'll, we'll still have about six or seven feet from the neighboring house?
Well, I think you have six or seven now. I think you probably have something like about four, or I think three or four.
Okay, and is there any, um, privacy fencing that is going to be included?
Uh, it's not on plan. I'm certain it could be added if, if the board felt it was necessary.
Okay, anyway, as the neighbor, I would certainly want it if the, if the driveway is big, is, you know, only a few feet away from my property, well, and a few feet away from my house.
All right, I see Miss Brown has her hand up.
Yep.
Go ahead.
You muted yourself, Ms. Brown.
Nope, so did I.
She muted.
Ms. Brown, you muted yourself?
Yeah, I muted.
Hold on.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm using different technology today, so I'm suffering. So everyone can, oh, feel my pain, especially the dog. Um, so, question, is this property in the flood zone? I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
It's a no, no, it's not.
I told you.
No, it is not, okay. Um, earlier in your testimony, you specified that because the adjacent property was on the lot line and the neighboring property was behind the lot line, that the prevailing setback wouldn't apply? Is that your professional testimony?
Yes, um, Mr. Marucci, um, read from the ordinance or, or stated from the ordinance, and if I, unless I misunderstood, that, um, the prevailing setback is only, uh, a prevailing setback is only applies if either A, all of the, the four closest properties have been looking closer to the street than required, or B, they're off further from the street than required, and that's not the case here.
What I understood is that you take the average of the four adjacent properties and that that prevailing setback supersedes the other setback.
Ms. Brown, only if they're all less than or more than the prevailing, I mean, the required.
Thank you, Mr. Ruben. Thank you. Okay, so, um, with respect to the garbage that you proposed to move from the one side of the garage to the other side, you said that it would originally be in, uh, some kind of Home Depot styled closure, and then you'd move it to the other side, which is smaller, but you were sure you can accommodate it. Well, what is the exact size there? Because I don't know that every, you know, size matters, let's just say.
So maybe, uh, I'll answer that question exactly, um. The, the room there, there's about a feet, and it gets a little bit narrow, it's a good in the rear. Um, it could be, at least, at least five and a half feet for this, we'd be, there would be something to.
Okay. Thanks, good, thank you. Um, and do you have a traffic engineer that's gonna speak, or should I ask you about parking?
Uh, there's no traffic engineer.
All right, so with respect to the fact that you're asking for a C variance for parking going from the required six spaces that you would, eight that you would offer six spaces, um, it's a very congested street, so can you explain your thinking?
I might should go and defer back to the planner, um, when we had a, we had a discussion here, and the planner is, um, prepared to address that.
Okay, thank you. That's all for now.
I think Mr. Williams has his hand up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh. Good, good evening, Mr. Fantina. Um, appreciate your testimony. A couple of, of quick questions. Um, and the first two, I believe, are really just to get at the, at clarification for the record, I think. Um, you mentioned the building orientation, uh, and as I understood your testimony, the orientation of the building on the site was based, you compared it to the orientation of the buildings on either side. Do you have an exhibit to help the board visualize your testimony?
Well, um, my, my, the only exhibit I have is, is the plans that we showed. And it's not, I didn't mean to say that it's gonna line up with the buildings on either side. They're only aligned with the building to the west, which is the corner building. That building is on the property line. The building, uh, to the east appears to be much more, uh, particularly are parallel with the street.
And do you have an exhibit to illustrate that, or, or plans, is it?
Yeah, uh, I can share the screen again.
Go ahead.
So essentially, uh, the buildings on the left is right on, on the property line, trying to, like down the property line here. So if you look here, here's our building line, if I can do this properly, the one on the line, and then the existing building lines are parallel. So, you know, the, the signs of the buildings are parallel.
Okay, thank you. And you did chat earlier, so I, thank you for clarifying the same question. Um, is offered in the context of the setbacks, and Commissioner Brown asked about the setback comparative analysis you did. Do you have an exhibit that illustrates that, uh, data?
The only thing I can show is that, once again, the building to the west of us is right on the property line. So that's really by inspection, uh, less than twenty feet. And then I'm actually referring to, uh, once again, Google, so, so I have on my computer and show here. But if you, if you go to the lab, so if you, if you've been to the study, the existing building is conforming, it's about twenty point five feet. And the buildings to the right, which we don't show the building to the east, is further back. It's, so it's, it's more than twenty feet, so this one complies, this one does not, and that's why the prevailing setback doesn't apply.
So, thank you, Brad. I, I'll defer to our board engineer, but in my opinion, it might be helpful to share an exhibit that substantiates that for, for the record, if not for the board. Um, the other question, and again, the third question is also about clarifications. And you mentioned, and I think I've heard this from an architect as well, the reason for the setback is to accommodate parking. Did I hear that correctly?
Okay, um, again, because, uh, what we have here is, is we have an existing garage, which we have time to keep. It, it gives us three parking spaces. It's in good shape. So that's kind of our end line, we've got 20, 40 feet and 80 feet. So this is, our building has to start, you know, to move back. Or else, that's really, that's really the driving force here.
Thank you for your clarification. And the follow-up for that two-part question may be more relevant to the planner or perhaps from both of you, but since this application is for density, wouldn't it be possible to key the front yard setback if you decrease the size of the proposed development and also the density? And that way you would lead me perhaps to other release that you're being sought, that are being sought, excuse me.
I would say the answer is probably not, yes, because I mean, if we need to, if we need to go with small, get less units, I think, yes.
Thank you. The other question is a follow-up to a question that was posed in our thick. And that was about the height. I think the art thick said you'd go over both coverage and height calculations, although I think he offered some testimony for the record, but said that you'd clarify. So if you could, that would be great.
Yeah, as far as the building height calculation, I'm going to try, oh, I can do this right? I'm going to try and make my screen big on here. Okay, hold on a second. Okay, building height calculations are shown on the sheet, right? And so they show the average finished ground on the building, based on elevations of the four quarters. And yeah, to go through the math, but it's 139.15. The roof peak, which I take from the, just taking the elevation difference from the first floor to the top of the peak from the architectural plans, comes to 175. I subtract those, and I get 137.1 feet.
Thank you. And your, your understanding of the, the height maximum is, what's the maximum in this zone?
I would say that is four. Fourteen.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I see Mr. Fisher has his hand up.
Yes, and then the other one is Mr. Wagner, too, I know is still waiting to ask his question. Mr. Chairman?
Question before Mr. Wagner did.
Is it my turn?
It's up to the chairman, either Mr. Fisher or Ms. Wa, and Mr. Wagner both have their hands up.
I saw Mr. Fisher first.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Okay, very quick, a few questions, Mr. Fantina, and I'll apologize to the board if I'm stepping out of my lane a little. First question, is the fence on the, to the property immediately to the west, is there a gate on that fence? And would that be proposed to remain? Will there be access between those two properties?
I will answer that, Mr. Fisher.
Next, and you may want to pull the site plan up. Between the building and the handicap parking space, there's a circle with a line through it that I would typically refer to as a symbol for a utility pole. Is a pole proposed between the building and the parking?
No.
What is that symbol?
Is that on the sheet, two of the plans, is that returned?
It would be on the site plan sheet, yes.
Oh, that building there?
Yes.
And that is simply, that's simply an A or Y sign. You know, with the terrible, you know, handicapped accessible, no parking near, find such and such sign.
Okay, that's a sign, not a pole.
Yeah, and what I said was, the word of this is one proposed, very typically A or Y parking space, and identifying such, another arrow to that sign.
Next question, along the western property line, and I apologize, it's been a couple of months since I've been out to the site. There's a tree basically right up against the building. Will that, I assume that tree will be removed?
Yes.
And can that be done without damaging the adjacent building?
It's going to have to be done without damaging the adjacent building.
And next question, which was the one that wasn't, was in my review memo but wasn't covered. Will the, what happens to the slate sidewalk on the property to the east? It looks like the site plan shows the sidewalk replacement beyond the property line. Will that slate be kept and restored or removed?
The plan suggests to go to the property line and back into that split parking, walkway. As a matter of fact, that's what happens in today. There's concrete in front of our property, and then slate in front of the neighboring property. And later, basically, if you replace the concrete on, in front of our property, then build up against the slate the way it is now. And in that effect, they're going to have slate at least not up in front of the neighboring property.
Okay. And then my last question, and this is where I'm starting to stray a little bit of a, out of traffic engineering. You said that the trash enclosure, you were going to move from one side of the building to the other. Can you explain the justification that makes, that moves the trash away from one property line but puts it right next to another neighbor's property line? One that does not have a solid fence? Can you explain why the east side is better than the west?
Yes, yes, I can. And essentially, on the east side of the property, and again, I don't have an area map, but on the east side of the property, there's, there's a parking lot back in that area. And we don't think would be, I think it's a very large parking lot, probably 50 cars or more. And I don't think that parking, that lot is used in that location.
Those are all my questions for now, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you, sir. Mr. Wagner, go ahead.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Fantina, I have a question regarding, you had mentioned the westerly property line and the, the building, you know, is following that line in parallel to the building to the west. But can you explain or confirm that, you know, you looked at the street along Park Avenue? Are there any other properties? I believe even the westerly property is square onto the, under the street, even despite it being along, parallel to the, to the property line. Is there, are there any other properties that are askew to the street?
That I'm aware of, and if I'm correct, the main sideline is along the property. It's not at a right angle, so the, the front of that, the front of the park is parallel with the park. You are correct about that.
Okay, thank you. And also, can you confirm the, the density? I, I know Mr. Williams brought it up, but I'm not, is it on the, is that on the site plans? Or is that on, which document is that on, or?
I don't know if I show that on my plans. Essentially, that's the evidence, and Mr. Williams or our planner, can, can...
Both have come up in the planning? Okay, I can finish my question, tell that, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
I just have a couple of questions. Mr. Fantina, you, you did speak to most of my report. We do have that issue with the drainage. There's no way that I could allow the overflow from the drywall to go to that back corner. So you will revise that accordingly, correct?
Correct.
With respect to curbing, you said you're only going to curb the easterly side?
That was on the tent, yes.
Well, the driveway is, is very tight to begin with. You're very close to your proposed building. Curbing serves a couple of purposes. It directs drainage flow, and it also keeps the cars in line. In other words, if you don't put curbing on the building side, there's chances of, of the building getting hit. I, I mean, why can't you curb the whole, the whole parking lot like, like you should?
I, I wouldn't can, on the one side, it is close to the, the western side. If that's, no doubt, it was necessary, we can certainly curb the entire parking lot.
I, I understand that the applicant also owns the property to the west, but someday they may not. And, and so we want to prevent a problem, so it really should be curbed all around. And my, my final question is the same question I asked Mr. Messick with respect to the walkway on the westerly side. I scale approximately 100 feet from that handicap parking space to the front entrance. What is your opinion?
Yeah, I, I think you said that, and I meant to address that in my testimony. No, wait, it's, it's about several feet down the, down the sidewalk, way walk, and then the ramp is a 30 feet or so. So it's about 100 feet. I agree with you, it's longer than you generally see. My understanding of the NDA is that when you provide a space, it has to be essentially the closest space to the door. This is, we don't have the option of putting it closer to the door. The grading does not allow us to go up a back door that would be handicapped accessible. So that, that's the best we can do in this situation.
Well, I understand that's the best you can do based on the design, but it could have been designed differently with a rear entrance instead of a, or both a front and a rear entrance. But that's just, I've been sworn in, so that's just my comment right now. I have no further comments.
Just to answer, Mr. Maruji, the applicant is, is fine with putting in the curbing around the entire site.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, Michael Ruby, can I just ask a quick question?
Go ahead, Mr. Williams.
Mr. Fantina, I want to refer to a form of proposed conditions map.
Up and up there, that'll help?
That'd be helpful.
Okay.
Starting on the west side, we show a vinyl fence turning into a wood fence, which, which on the east, on, on, on the east side turns into a chain link fence. Some of it is on the property line, within the property line, and most of it is outside the property line. Can you explain to me what's there versus what's new?
Everything we see there is existing.
And it will not be changed?
Except with the chain link fence, if it conflicts with our, with our property, our, our, you know, print on thread now, it'll have to be moved if it's on our property. Also, one of the board members had asked that we put some kind of privacy fencing in this area, so that's certainly something that we would be, would do if the board felt it was necessary.
In the rear behind the garage, is that chain link or is that wood?
That's chain link, I believe.
And you, you're not going to put any buffers between the wood fence and your property line? What, in other words, you're not going to create dead space between that wood fence on the west side and this property, correct?
Well, just similarly here, we're going to put some, some plantings in there now, because there'll be room for it.
I'm just concerned of creating unexcessive expertise that ends up being unmaintainable between the wood fence off the property line or property line.
Dave, I think counselor is speaking to create almost like a gore, if you will, counselor in between.
I see that.
So I, I think the, the answer is the applicant's willing to replace, because he is the, they are the owners of the adjacent property, they'll replace the fencing with the fencing that the board deems appropriate for this. So it has to be...
The first thing that's interesting to expose, all I'm saying is, you know, sometimes what happens is you put up landscaping, and then there's a filter move between the landscaping and the fence, and no one really maintains it. And it becomes a place where garbage collects, and grass grows, and vermin gathers. And I just wanted to make sure that there isn't, given the, the fact that the fence is off the, off the property line, I just want to make sure that that space will not go unattended.
That's a big point, as Mr. Ruben said, we'll make sure that happens by, by offensive necessary.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, Mr. Williams.
I'd like to make some clarity from the engineer. Looking at the plans from 1122, 2020, page, I don't know, I don't know what page it says. But, let's take a time. This line that I see drawn here, from the top, from, looking at it from the top, it appears to me, or I assume it was a curbing of some sort, since it goes into your, your parking area. So, since you talked to Mr. Maruji, oh, right, I'm sorry, yeah, you have it right here. I might assume that's not concrete curbing? Is that a line?
That, that's the edge of the pavement, pavement, as I say, I love the way it just, including Mr. Maruji, that that will be curbing, yes.
So, so this pavement, will it be raised to perform a curbing? Or is it lower or higher than what Mr. Ruben's asking for?
I don't understand that. Say it, say it again, please.
Next to the house, that curbing, or pavement, is it going to be lower or higher than a curve that Mr. Ruben's asking for?
It's essentially, wait, there's not, there's not a tremendous amount of grating going on down in this area. And the curve will be probably a six-inch reveal, which is typical, six-inch face. And the pavement obviously is six inches below that. So the curve will, as you indicated, it'll come around the corner here, go around this, hit the, hit the block, come back here and go down, everything. On the edges of the pavement will be curved.
So that's not going to be a trip hazard?
People's trouble walking around a walkway, will that be a trip hazard? I would actually, I don't think I can use that at the moment. I would say, I talked to Mr. Maruji about that.
Sure.
You do make a, a good point. What I've done in the past is, instead of making a six-inch reveal, make a depressed curve or something in the edge, or it could be a trip hazard. Obviously, if somebody's parked, and somebody's walking through their light, the lights are off, that certainly is a possibility, we'll take that into consideration. I don't want to discuss that one with Mr. Maruji.
Sure. And also too, is that where your 10 feet is going to be, starting at that point, from one curve to the other curve?
Yes, it's on here to there.
All right, all right, just wanted to clarify your understanding, because I just assumed when looking at this and I saw the, you know, that long piece sticking out, that that was going to be a pavement of some sort. And then when I heard him mentioning the curbing, I got a little bit more confused in trying to understand this drawing and saying to myself, exactly what is there?
Got you.
But thank you.
Brown has her hand up.
Thank you. I just wondered, you know, since you, you talked about the space along the side of the garage, is there any, is there any consideration for bike racks anywhere?
I would put, put a bike rack into here, in the space in the basement, or in the garage, if someone, if someone had one of ten, set a bike.
In the garage?
Well, the garage is actually a little bit bigger than what is required for three cars. It's about 34 feet inside wall to inside wall.
How are you going to assign the spaces? There's three spots in the garage.
I'll defer that to, to someone else on my team. I don't, it's sufficient.
I bring it up because I can't imagine someone who has their car parked in the garage wants somebody else to drag their kids' bikes next to it. Depending on the kind of bike you have and the kind of car you have, it could be pretty ripe for an argument.
I believe, Mr. Messick is still here, I believe the door, I think there are 10-foot wide doors. It's a, it's a relatively new garage, so that would probably work. And in other properties of this applicant, they, it works fine having the bikes in the, in the basement along with the other stories.
Finish this, Brad.
Yes, please.
Board, any other questions? Does the applicant of your opposition counsel have any questions?
Yes, I have a number of questions. A number have been addressed by the question to the board and the board's professionals, but I still have some. The existing house, how far is that setback from the street?
20.5 feet.
Sorry, I didn't quite hear.
It's 20.5 feet.
Your, your plan shows it being 25.58 feet. Is, is that man error?
Where do you see it, Mr. Harrison?
On your second sheet, the existing conditions map side of that sheet.
This.
I, I, I do see that, but I believe that's, uh, the, the measurement has to be taken to the, the front stoop there.
The survey, the survey shows that the front right corner is twenty-five, twenty-five nine, and the left corner is twenty-five, twenty-five eight. That's the survey I have in front of me.
Yeah, I, I think that, that Mr. Harrison is correct. I'm looking at the Kent Fuller survey, which is a matter of the record here. It was submitted and I, and I concur with those, um, I concur with those two points.
Yeah, when you, when you, the twenty-five, I believe is to the, the, the front, the, the front, there's a little bit of a.
There's a front, there's a front porch, is that what you're over?
Yeah.
Yeah, is that the way the code reads here, that it's to the, it's to the covered porch?
I, I believe so.
It's exempt. It, it can extend seventy-two inches into the, um, into the required required yard of the, you know, it. But yeah, the front building will not from a covered, a covered, um, landing entryway steps.
And to answer your question, Mr. Harrison, is the number twenty-five, twenty-five eight is correct? And I need to change the number in the chart.
Yeah, that was the discrepancy. It missed a porch.
Okay, and, um, that, that house just, yeah, the existing house is lined up parallel with Fark Avenue as the other houses are, other buildings are going to blow apart and stuff, uh.
It's incorrect, yes.
Then, the, the number of variances that you're requesting are a function of proposing a four-family dwelling, is that correct? And if you propose less units, you'd be able to conform much more closely to, to the ordinance, is that correct?
I, I believe that is correct, yes.
And the drainage, I just want to understand where we are, and it'll save a lot of questions, but, but let me give a preface. The property that is basically flat, but to the extent there's a slope, the drainage is towards the northwest corner of the site, is that correct?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's basically almost to north, uh, really, because it goes off the side to the back.
But the, the lowest point is that northwest corner, is that correct?
Uh, yes, it is.
And based on the question, Mr. Marucci, you indicated that you would remove the inlet that you had proposed in that location.
That, that's correct.
And, uh, and I just want to understand in terms of the curving, that, that is, because ultimately, drainage and that way affect my client's property.
Mm-hmm.
Proposing curving in that stretch where, you know, you were originally proposing the air conditioning and some of the trash enclosure, uh, those, those two stretches between the garage wall and the property line, are they to the edge of the pavement?
Yes, and, and in addition to that, we're also dr, uh, growing the, the property, that, that part that away from the neighborhood, from your client's property, towards the, uh, drywall, towards the other.
I, I understand that and.
That's correct as well.
I have concerns, I'll let Mr. Marucci deal with this, as to whether your drywall is work, whether the depth is, is a high water table, but since the water is no longer going towards my client's property, uh, I'll let that be Mr. Marucci's problem and your problem. Um, the, how many, um, garbage containers and recycling containers are you proposing for the four units?
I, I'm not certain what, what the number there is. We would have to work that out.
Because I, I, I guess that the, the question is size of the, um, container that's going to hold them and whether that's going to fit where it's proposed and, um, you know, so I think, you know, that having that information would be useful to be sure, to know how it's affecting my client's property. The other question, you said on the snow removal, if there's a big snow or a couple successive mid-size storms, they'd have to contract, um, to have the snow removed, I understand that. But if, you know, let's say it's a four-inch snow, where, where would the snow be put? And big enough to plow, but, you know, not enough to ship it off site?
I don't know, I think, I think you would, you know, some, for a couple of days, some of the spaces might lose a foot or two and be a little bit cramped, as it is sometimes in a small parking lot or a residential lot like that.
Okay, but, but will you have to keep the handicap space in the, the van festival portion clear, right?
Yes, that, that would, I mean, if it wasn't handicap, it's supposed to have, it would go up to the front door. That part would have to be cleared, yes.
Um, okay, uh, under legislation that, um, recently was signed into law, there's a requirement that the parking spaces be fitted for, so they can be set up for electrical cars, or is this site embedded into account?
Not to my knowledge, no.
Um, do you know where the garage was built, was it built by the current property owner?
I don't know, so, but I don't know when.
Okay, and, uh, you had, there's one question from the one tree that is going to be removed. Are there other trees that will be removed?
Yeah, there's a few trees on the property, um, that we refer to, planted over here. In the front yard, uh, there are two trees, uh, I would expect they would both be removed. Uh, I don't, we expect to remove, to, I don't expect to remove anything, uh, behind the garage. There is a tree, uh, I see between my house and the garage that would also be removed.
So about how many trees?
About three, three trees.
Um, now, is there any, you know, yes, and, you know, do something outside, kids to play catch or barbecue or anything like that? Is there anything like that provided on the property?
No, this property, no.
Okay. Just bear with me a second, um. Okay, that, that's all my questions.
Thank you. Is there any member of the public who has a question?
I don't understand. No, nobody has their hand raised.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask one more question of the engineer? Um, I just want to confirm, um, that in terms of the total lot coverage, um, I know that was mentioned early on, but I, I just want some clarification. Um, the total lot coverage that is being proposed would be, I think, seventy-seven percent. Um, and that, and that would be moving from an existing approximately forty-three percent? So we're going from forty-three percent to seventy-seven percent lot coverage?
Essentially, yes.
Okay.
I see a member of the public, Mr. Alvarez, has a question.
Yes, you just made me think about, something more about the garbage. I think you said it was about a five square foot, uh, being five on a side area that he's been putting in. Is that correct?
It's not even that, it's five feet wide, about five and a half feet wide, but it's much deeper than that.
Well, one thing I wonder about, if I think, you have to think about access to, like, so the trucks actually pick it up. And also, that seems actually fairly small, because I know in our community, how much garbage just too bad these do. And how many people do you, especially if they have children, do you imagine being in this? And I could imagine people filling up these trash cans and trash, lying them on the ground, maggots and things like that. It seems, it doesn't seem to be very sanitary, you know, what you're doing. So what, what plans do you have to make sure that area doesn't become, you know, unsightly, you know, with all the flies that are around?
Well, what, what we're playing, what we're proposing to do is have these, you know, little enclosures. Uh, but like I said, um, so it's not going to be flies or rats or something of that nature. And we don't expect the truck to come in and pick up the garbage. The garbage will be taken out to the curb.
By whom?
By, um, designated person, whether it's manager, somebody of that nature.
And, and sir, I could also come to answer that, uh, the, the applicant is involved in professional real estate management for, um, over forty years. All their properties are kept immaculate, and they would have a designated person that would be responsible for this to make sure that the property is kept in the same manner that their other properties are kept, um, uh, both here in Bloomfield and in other townships as well.
Assuming they keep owning that property, you can't speak for a future owner.
Yeah, I can only speak to this one.
The, uh, Mr. Cannon, Joe.
Ben Geiser, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, can, can I have your name and address, please?
Stephen Cannon Geiser, K.A.N.E.N.G.I.S.E.R., uh, at eighty-five, uh, Park Avenue. And, you know, the, the traffic and the parking on both sides on, um, the, the side street there, Edgewood, can get very, um, congested and two cars coming, uh, in other directions have to pull over. And I'm, I'm worried about additional.
Uh, sir, sir, this is time for questions only. There will be time for statements later. So if you have a question for the witness, that's fine. If you want to make a statement, you'll have an opportunity later, probably next month, next month, but nonetheless, you will have an opportunity at the end of the hearing, okay?
Okay, it was just a parking question, okay.
Well, you can ask questions, but you said like you're making a, like a statement, it should be done under road, and you're not under road.
Okay, I pass. Thank you.
All right, any other questions for the engineer?
I don't see anybody else's hand.
Any other questions at all for the engineer? No, no one?
No.
Thank you, Mr. Fantina.
Thank you.
Uh, we've reached eleven o'clock. We will have to adjourn the rest of this application to the future date, uh, meeting in regular meeting, I guess, September ninth, if that's doable, if any?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Uh, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Harrison, we didn't hear from you. Is that okay for you, Mr. Harrison?
Bear, bear with me a second, I have to check my work. Okay, I'll do it. I'm, I'm good at anything. We're at work today.
Okay.
They have a motion, Board, to adjourn this application to regular meetings September ninth at seven P.M. or.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, Mr. Johnson moves it. Is there a second?
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
For a second, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed? I hear no one opposed, therefore, uh, this application of sixty-five Park Avenue is adjourned to the regular meeting of September ninth. Thank you. Um, I have two more to adjourn, so hang in there, Board. Uh, the two-thirty-one Browden Avenue, still available.
Is the applicant here for two-thirty?
Yeah, he's here.
Who's that?
Yeah, we're here.
Okay, Mr. Salta.
All right, we're not going to get to your application tonight. Um, we can adjourn you to September ninth at, uh, at seven P.M. You can keep following, uh, the other applications. Or you can adjourn to October if you feel so.
So we would be the next basically on, uh, on the list?
No, no.
Or, uh?
Yes.
Sorry, guys. Yeah, go ahead, guys.
You want September ninth?
Uh, yes, September ninth is the earliest, right?
That's the earliest.
Yeah, well, September ninth is fine.
All right, in waiting class, interest rate?
Aye.
All right. Board, may I have a motion to adjourn two-thirty-one Browden Avenue to September ninth, seven P.M.? No further notice being required.
So, Mr. Chairman?
The prince moves his, uh.
Second.
For a second, for a second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? There are no one opposed. Two-thirty-one Browden, adjourned to September ninth, seven P.M. No further notice required. And we come to the last one, uh, fifty-six Monroe Place, we have to stay, and Mr. Paul Maris, Mr. Paul Maris. We have a special meeting scheduled on September twenty-second for vault variances, which is the category urine. Would that work for you?
It would, but it's September ninth out of the question.
You're never going to get heard.
Okay.
That's, that's why I mean. Go ahead, Chairman.
September ninth, and then adjourn again to September twenty-second, or you go right to September twenty-second?
Uh, well, I, I know that Nicole is quite the expert there, but, uh, does it hurt for me to be on the ninth? Because I, just because of the timing of, uh.
No, you can, you can be on the ninth, but, you know, unfortunately, you might have the same.
Right.
Wait till eleven P.M. to find out.
Right.
Okay, and, uh, the twenty-second will put us at a different pace?
Okay, vault variances, we don't have the, uh, we don't have the, the use variances on the, on the.
Okay, you know what, if we could, uh, we can put us on the ninth, and then if that doesn't work, we'll go to the twenty-second, after, but I don't think that's going to work.
Okay, we'll do that then. And your wait of time?
Thank you. Yes.
Okay. Uh, so, May, Board, may I have a motion to adjourn, uh, fifty-six Monroe Place to the regular meeting of September ninth at seven P.M. with no further notice?
I know.
I'll make that.
Oh, sorry.
Hi, what?
Go ahead, Mr. Wagner.
So moved. Sorry, Mr. Johnson.
Who's second?
Okay.
Who's second?
I'll start then.
Mr. Johnson's second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? There is no one opposed. Fifty-six Monroe Place is adjourned to the regular meeting of September ninth, seven P.M. No further notice required. Any other business tonight, Board? There are no one. May I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
The prince must be adjourned. Is there a second?
Yes, second, everyone.
One second.
Second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed? I hear no one opposed. We are adjourned. Thank you very much, Board. Have a good evening.
Good night.
Good night, everyone. Take care.
Good night.